We'll go ahead and bring the meeting to order here, we'll get started. Reno City Planning Commission, Wednesday, October 18th, 2017. Welcome, and we will begin our agenda with the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you could all join Commissioner Johnson in leading us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Michelle, can I have a roll call, please?
Mark Johnson?
Here.
Britton Griffith Douglas?
Present.
Ed Hawkins?
Here.
Paul Levis?
Here.
John Marshall?
Here.
Kevin Wiskey?
Here.
Peter Gower?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment, item number three, this item is for either public comments on any action item or for any general public comment, and just a reminder, if you have a public comment, please fill out one of these public comment forms. I do have two under this item three, general public comment. First one is from Tammy Holt Still.
I have something for the...Tammy Holt Still, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, and I'm still here because the water is still, and the sewer plant is still feeding Swan Lake, and the water is still in Swan Lake. As you can see by my research, I have found where warehouses and restaurants and hotels and the amount of affluent water they generate per day. Right now, you guys have already gone last winter over your allotment of 2 million gallons per day into that lake. You don't have any availability to keep building out there. There needs to be a moratorium on the North Valleys. Anything that goes to that sewer plant needs to stop and stop now. You have apartments starting to build, you have homes starting to build, and there's also land being broke for more warehouses and more apartments. It's gotta stop. You need a moratorium. You've got to pay attention to what you're doing to the residents in the valley. You're flooding us out. It's time to clean up your backyard, because my front yard's becoming a mess still. I just got done escorting News 4 around the other day, or yes, today, and showing them the differences in what has happened because of the growth. You guys are not taking care of what you need to take care of. When winter comes again, you guys are gonna go over your allotment again of 2 million gallons a day, and I don't think that's right. I have tried going through the state to tell them, they know exactly what's going on, but they need to find you, they need to do something to stop this. They're the ones that give you the permits, you also had one permit that was pulled during that time of year, because you weren't meeting your conditions per the permit. You, as a planning, and the city of Reno, need to step up and do what's right, and that is stop the mor-, or put a moratorium out there until you know exactly where your water's going to go. You had all summer to put pipe in to pump it someplace else. We know that Story County wants your affluent water. Have you guys talked to them about setting something up? I doubt it, but it's something you need to be looking at. I am tired of coming to this stuff, I'm tired of looking you people in the face and nothing being done. The residents out there don't deserve what we are receiving, which is nothing. We pay taxes, we are involved, and we take care of our stuff, but we can't take care of water that is coming from your sewer plant into a lake that can't handle it. It's only 1,800 square acres, thank you Danny, and you guys are putting in much more than that. It's still eight foot deep in the middle, it's not going anywhere, and you guys are gonna pump more into it this winter, besides what little you're pumping into it right now because you're feeding the park and you're feeding the golf courses. Where's it gonna go? What are you gonna do with it? You need to figure it out, and that's as a planning department and as the city of Reno, since it's your responsibility, need to do it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the Speaker a quick question? Is that an appropriate thing?
I would prefer Commissioner Marshall that we didn't do that during public comment, if you wanted to bring that up during Commissioner items later on in the agenda, I think that would be a more appropriate time.
Just as to whether or not she has any comments on Policy 6.2E flood management, she could provide that at the time when we're considering it.
But you could certainly...
That's all I was gonna suggest.
Certainly encourage her to do that.
Thank you.
Yep. Danny Cleas.
Dan Cleas, for the record, I got a scenario for you guys. What if I went into town and bought two to six blocks, leveled them all, brought in 100 head of cattle, dozen horses, some pigs, couple chickens here and there? Is that gonna be acceptable? Why would you wanna put in a subdivision or a warehouse out where I live in the rural areas? It doesn't apply, I can't do it in town. Why would you wanna do that to me out there in the country? It's not fair. Our units, our housing area, I should say, was set up for one thing, that goes to one plus acre lots, scattered homes, not on a regular track home, and it needs to stay that way. We don't need warehouses in the middle of our rural areas that separate our subdivision from our real rural area. We don't need apartments, we don't need houses, multifamily houses. It's just not right. If I can't bring my farm to the city, you city folks shouldn't be out at my farm. That was just one scenario, and hopefully it applies for all the North Valley areas. I know a lot of people feel the same way I do. It's not right, what you guys are doing, especially if you wanna put warehouses in a rural area. Keep it next to the freeway, that's where they belong. Thanks.
Thank you Danny. Eric, was your public comment under this item, or was it for the master plan?
Master plan.
Okay. Any other public comments under item three, which is general public comment? See none, I will close public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. Please come forward if you have a public comment.
It's a downtown area, is that the downtown area or no?
Can you come up to the microphone?
Yes, I submitted the four, but I'm not sure is this the right...
So if your comment is for general public comment on anything that you wanna talk about, now's the time. If it's specific to the master plan for our item under item six, or seven, you can talk then, or you can do both.
It's page 105 of the area-specific policies regional center.
Let's do that under the master plan, if that's all right with you?
Perfect.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so we will move on to item four, which is approval of the minutes, 4.1, our meeting from September 20th. Looking for a motion or any changes, if there are any? If not, motion?
Commissioner Wiskey, so moved.
Thank you, have a motion?
Mr. Johnson, all second.
And a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Commissioner Marshall, abstain? We'll move on then to item number five, city council liaison reports, and we have Councilwoman Breckus here this evening, welcome.
Good evening, it's good to be here for my quarterly update. I was made the, it's been awhile, I'm on the front end this quarter, but I thought I'd come in and excited to see you all. I wanna give you a little bit of update about how things are progressing from you to us on some of the current planning activities. We had very interesting scenario procedurally last meeting, it's something that we foresaw some time ago, and that is that a member of the council felt that a decision of yours was not correct and wanted to appeal it. And there'd been a history many years ago, before our current city attorney, and I think our current city attorney made the right decision, that members of the council could appeal decisions of the planning commission, as you know, especially with permits, some approvals are final. But there was a decision that council members used to be able to appeal, and sometimes council members would just do it on behalf of another resident, just to save them a $50 fine charge, but obviously you can tell that that biases a person, council member, who then sits as the decider on the appeal. And we knew we had a problem a long time ago, and the council asked staff to address this, but it hadn't raised up to the level of the queue, but, so Mr. McKenzie appealed a decision, it was something up in near Par Boulevard area, but then he had to recuse himself, so Ward 4 voters were deprived representation on that appeal decision, because he had to recuse himself and stand as the appellant. And it's a very easy fix and code, it's very typical that the governing body will give a lot of delegation to the planning commission, but also reserve some jurisdiction, and I think it's a good check and balance, and I think it's a way that we'll be looking forward to as we move on to our Title 18 work, that we're gonna be kicking off here pretty soon, pretty excited about that. But we had a late-long meeting, so the CVS appeal of the sign decision, I think it's related to a sign, I think it was actually 24, I can't remember the trigger on that approval, but it was related to a condition, that appeal got kicked off for another meeting. And we also kicked off your recommendation to amend the master plan to expand the footprint of gaming on the master plan. It's a piece adjacent to something that already has some master plan for gaming, and so that's an interesting one, because we really, you know, the gaming master plan designations have been pretty set in form for a long time, and this is the first time I've seen in long, long time, that master plan amendment to add new gaming land has come through, so we'll be doing that next time. There was a subdivision approval, and as an aside, maybe only the second one I've ever seen in 25 years doing this business, the other one was something the council turned down last year, but a subdivision denial by this body that, or if it, I don't know, maybe it's not a denial, I think it was something procedural on that, that'll be appealed up to us also, I think that's coming at our first meeting in November. And just in terms of Swan Lake and that activity, I've toured this week with some of the residents, I toured about a, three months ago with a large property owner in the area, I've toured also with staff, and it's really something to get out there to see, if you haven't looked at it, and we are in litigation over the use of our treatment plant there, and some of the residents are claiming that we are causing, you know, condemning their use of land essentially, and so it's going through that proceeding, but that should not have a chilling effect on us doing a level of inquiry into how our treatment plant is operating, and what our treatment plant's capacity is to bring on new growth, and so that's something that I'm looking into right now. Really excited for you guys to be working on the master plan, great job by staff and everyone, we're kinda maybe getting to third base and starting to look at home, but this is when things get really interesting, and I wanna thank staff for doing a really super job in highlighting what are kind of the pinpointed deciding issues to come forward, I think that'll probably take up a lot of your topic tonight. I was a little disappointed to see what I perceive as the concurrency discussion get watered down. I think when you read what the courts have looked at as master plans, they're not a straitjacket, they're guidance, that's direct language, and so I think any argument that you can't have standards, they're not, they're not, they're not code, they're standards, so changing it to targets I think is maybe a little bit more watering down, and really not something that an entity that's having as hard a time as we are all over this valley needs to be, because you pay for it soon or you pay for it later, and we have a lot of unhappy residents, the council hears about just the inadequacy of the infrastructure and service levels that they're seeing out in some of these outlying areas, and we need to be very mindful of that. I think sometimes washing a master plan move forward is, if it's hard to craft an issue or a direction, a policy, you can always put it on a to-do list, you know, develop a growth management strategy, do that, and then we will build that into our work program, and you would too, so I think that if we get to a point where we're not quite sure where to go, we can maybe put it on the to-do list, it's the, and I think that's a good out. And I do wanna let you know that I was very pleased to see somewhat of the growth parameters, the guidance, to look at some of these growth areas as some of the markup in the changes, and just to let you know, from some of the issues we're dealing with over at Tomah and the council's dealing with, you know, we brought in all the Morton-Singarson land in the 2006 regional plan, but we're pretty far off on a lot of services, and we know we're far off on water on Tomah. Well, Tomah today, very excited, regional cooperation has made a decision to go and begin purchase negotiations with that private water utility, and then work on, it's gonna be a very complex financing plan to get the Tomah water lines out there and assess the property owners existing and future out there, and it's really unfortunate that we didn't have that intermediate step in between subdivisions coming in and having to build a capital project and the regional plan, and I really do think that this intermediate step of packaging it all together is what we're missing. I don't think it's gonna be a tool of the master plan, maybe it's joint plans. I've been advocating for joint plans in these growth areas for quite some time, and those of you who are on regional planning will, you know, be seeing that in front and center from you when you work on those statues, and maybe that's a way we need to go, is start to think about joint planning, to get us that intermediate step of putting the capital and the timing, because there's a lot of capital projects on this harf, far-flung land that we're starting to experience, and so I'm really excited to see how we deal with these outstanding issues, and look forward to your recommendation. I don't know we're having another joint meeting, are we? Okay, great. Do you have any questions for me, anyone? Okay, terrific. Well, hope I come back and we've adopted a master plan, and we're starting to get our heads into how we're gonna rewrite a Title 18.
Looking forward to it. All right, thanks Councilwoman. All right, moving on on our agenda, for item 6.1, this is a proclamation declaring the month of October as Community Planning Month, which is exciting. So Angela Fuess is here, and she's gonna tell us a little bit about that.
Go ahead, no, 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 go ahead.
Thank you, so I'm here today on behalf of the American Planning Association, and for those of you that don't know, October is National Community Planning Month. So this really is an opportunity for communities around the nation to come together and really just acknowledge the great accomplishments that communities are making in terms of land use decisions, as well as to acknowledge all the people and the groups and people like yourself, the planning commissioners, who make that happen. So I'm here today on behalf of, again, APA, just to say thank you for your commitment and your dedication, and of course, your time for volunteering on behalf of the planning commission, as well as to thank all the staff, that includes all the planning staff, the legal staff, the engineering staff, who without their technical expertise, we wouldn't have these great plans moving forward, such as the master plan that you have before you today. So, on behalf of the entire American Planning Association membership and the board, thank you for your commitment to the community and making this place where we all live, work, and play, a great place to be. Thank you.
Alrighty, I will read the proclamation, may I?
You may.
Alrighty, I'm very excited to do this too. I'm a planner, and one of the good things, my day job, but one of the good things about planning is that it's a very accessible practice, and the planning profession recognizes the important contributions of people from so many disciplines, and most of all, citizen planners, really. They really recognize the work and effort and focus and perspectives, that people who give up time from their evenings and participate, and even, you know, folks who come to neighborhood meetings, they're planners too, you know, who give comment on how you can have a good master plan, they're planners too. So, whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas, community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas, the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. Whereas, the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environments, and whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of planning commission members and other citizen planners who contribute their time and expertise, expertise to the improvement of Reno, Nevada, and whereas, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of Reno, Nevada, and extend our sincere appreciation for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, I, Jenny Breckus, Reno City Council Member, Ward 1, on behalf of Hillary Alshibi, Mayor of the City of Reno, Nevada, do hereby proclaim October 2017 as Community Planning Month. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you. You bet.
Thank you so much. Well, with that, we will move into, fittingly, our master plan item, which is a great planning project that Sienna and, huh? It's almost like it was planned that way. For planners, that's a good thing. So let's roll on to item number seven. Sienna, welcome.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'm incredibly excited to be with you here tonight, to present for your consideration the adoption of our new master plan and repeal of our existing master plan. So for this item tonight, our goal is really to provide a very brief overview of the Reimagine Reno process that was utilized to update the master plan, also a brief overview of some of the key highlights in terms of the plan content, and then spend a bit more time walking through nine outstanding policy issues. And importantly here, we are looking for direction on these nine policy issues here So as you are very familiar with, we started the Reimagine Reno process to update the city's master plan about two and a half years ago in April of 2015. This process started with visioning that really flowed into the development of plan foundations, making some key policy choices, and then over the past year, we've been firmly drafting the plan and then taking that draft plan forward for community review. And so at this stage, we are starting the formal adoption process this evening with you tonight. So just to give a bit more information on the process that's been used, the Reimagine Reno process, the master plan has been informed, informed by extensive community engagement. From the outset of developing the master plan, really the goal here was to go big and engage as many people as we could, so that we had a very clear understanding of what the community's vision for Reno over the next 20 years is desired to be. So for that Phase 1 portion of Reimagine Reno that was really focused on community visioning and values, we reached almost 6,000 people through a whole host of methods, in-person and online, and as we've transitioned into Phase 2 of Reimagine Reno, which is really much more focused on reviewing the draft plan, normally you see kind of a die-off in participation, as you ask folks to review large documents, but we've really been so fortunate to continue to have wonderful public engagement, we've reached over 3,100 people in this stage of the master plan development, also using online and in-person engagement So to shift gears here to highlight the content of the plan, how it's organized, wanted to really first off, take a look at what were those factors that we really examined before we started developing that plan organization and content. So relying on our community profile that had extensive data work, as well as additional technical analyses of housing, employment, fiscal impact analysis, what we knew is that there are a variety of trends and forces that are going to be shaping the city of Reno over the coming years, and that the city of Reno is going to need to respond to within that time. So to take a look at some of these, we certainly know that population growth is expected to occur, also, the demographics of our population are all changing as well, so Reno is younger than other jurisdictions, certainly more ethnically diverse as well, but what we are starting to face is a larger retirement age population that is set to increase, and that certainly will bring additional challenges in relation to services, and also in relation to potential shifts in home types that are demanded. Additionally, the city, coming out of the Great Recession, is experiencing a period of sustained job growth, we've seen a lot of growth in some of our more service-oriented businesses, certainly in distribution and warehousing, also in manufacturing, but as we look towards the future, when we want to think about how might we attract higher-income jobs, maybe those that are associated with advanced manufacturing, more kind of the knowledge economy, what we know is that we need to support those jobs with land use choices, and then also our investment choices, particularly in terms of vibrant urban places. Also, we know from our housing work that housing demand is shifting, and this is really based on constraints in terms of affordability, what people have the means to afford, and then also changing preferences. So people are definitely starting to desire more walkable neighborhoods, that's something that we've heard time and time again throughout community engagement, and so as we look towards the future, what we know is that we need those wider variety of housing types in place. And then additionally, what is complicating moving forward with that wider variety of housing is we have a lot of single-family homes that were constructed in the most recent past, basically over the past 10 years, and we've approved a lot of housing, predominantly in the form of planned unit developments, that has a lot of detached single-family homes on relatively large lots, and kind of statistic up on the slide, we have about 35,000 units remaining that are unbuilt and approved PUDs, and our general need for units over the next 20 years is about 25,000. So we have a lot of units on the books, and not all of them might be exactly aligned with what we need. And then additionally, the city faces limited numbers of tools to fund existing and expanded services, as well as infrastructure improvements needed to maintain infrastructure, and then also more proactively guide where we'd like to see growth come online after infrastructure investment. So also, key in shaping the draft master plan before you tonight were the visioning and value results out of the Reimagine Reno Phase 1 process, what we heard from the community in terms of what the community would like to see now and in the future, Reno being a base for outdoor activities, an arts and culture center, a university town and technology center, certainly values that are strongly held, affordability, a sense of community even in the face of change, safety, and well-maintained and attractive infrastructure. Additionally, of note, walkable neighborhoods, again, is a major takeaway that we continued to hear not only from Phase 1 to Phase 2, but also a key desire to improve and revitalize downtown Reno, being a critical concern of the community. And also, certainly what has influenced the drafting of the plan is the direction that we received from the commission and the city council regarding some key policy choices in terms of employment, really trying to identify, protect, and increase the amount of employment land that we have, in terms of housing, encourage a wider variety of housing so that we can meet demand in the future, really focus our infill and redevelopment priorities, and then improve our neighborhoods, both existing and new, in terms of walkable and connected communities, those neighborhoods also have amenities, and infrastructure really underpinning all of this, how can we, even with limited resources, try to be more proactive and align our infrastructure investments with the goals and policies of the master plan? So transitioning here to the plan and its policy framework that was developed to respond to those different factors, one of our, not one, but many of our key objectives, you can see here on this slide, really wanted to touch on those, what were we aiming for at the outset of this plan development process? So really producing a plan... So really producing a plan that is firmly rooted in the community's vision and values. We wanted to build upon the strong foundations in our existing master plan, but then also take advantage of ongoing city initiatives and some of those newer initiatives. So things like the downtown master plan was developed to align with the master plan before you tonight. Also looking forward to our Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, being able to support that effort as well as other initiatives. And then critically, one of the most important things that we were going for was making the new master plan more user-friendly. And this goes back to having a clear through line to the community's vision, but also really just trying to reduce and streamline the overall plan, reduce its size, make it a little bit more accessible to folks, and in doing so consolidate a lot of the plans within the plan that we had. So in terms of how we've been able to deliver on those objectives, guiding the entire plan, our eight guiding principles, and these are connected to the community's vision, they really synthesize that visioning and values input that we received. You'll note that they're theme-based, that's really to help promote systems thinking as well as the interrelatedness of all of these topics. And importantly, not only do they guide the entire plan, but they also help to structure our citywide policies, really trying to effectuate that clean through line. So you can see here, our eight guiding principles really connected to visioning and values, those help to influence our goals and ultimately our policies that are going to help to guide our day-to-day decision-making for those issues that are applicable citywide. And then supporting those policies are implementation strategies. And certainly, that's a new portion of our master plan that we've been excited about, and I'll definitely go into a little bit more detail about those implementation strategies in just a bit. But a little bit more on the citywide policies. We definitely built upon the foundations of our current master plan, but also really looked to what are those policy areas that we're missing and what are those policy areas that we need to expand. So in terms of some of our newer policy areas, we have economic development playing a much more prominent role in this master plan, hazard mitigation, local food access, those weren't necessarily in the master plan that we have currently adopted. And then in terms of where did we really bolster some of our policy areas, sustainability and resilience was a big key area there, hazard mitigation certainly connected to that, and then also housing in neighborhoods, really a lot more policies coming online Additionally, we have area-specific policies as part of the updated plan. All of this policy work is guided by our structure plan, which as you know, really illustrates kind of the highest level of land use, really those very broad, generalized patterns of development. And what we have are two types of centers, downtown and community neighborhood centers that are connected by corridors. Our urban and suburban corridors really build upon the work that was done previously for our primary and secondary transit-oriented development corridors, but we have two new corridor types, neighborhood and greenways coming online to help support connectivity and multimodal connections. And then we have a variety of different land use typologies, some focusing on employment areas and some focusing on neighborhoods. And it's really this framework that has allowed the city to streamline the master plan before you tonight. It's doing a lot of work for us, reorganizing about 24 plans, whether those be center or corridor or neighborhood plans, into a smaller number of light categories. And what's been great about this approach is that we've been able to say, well, what is working in those plans, and apply that best practice citywide. Additionally, supporting not only our citywide policies, but our area-specific policies is our growth and reinvestment framework. And it really takes a much more detailed look at the physical growth and development of the city over time. And so what were we trying to achieve in developing the growth and reinvestment framework? So first and foremost, we wanted to very clearly convey where and how growth and development is going to occur in the city in the future. We also wanted a land use plan that was going to act as a tool for us to monitor and track land supply in addition to providing that overall clarity in terms of the city's growth pattern. Additionally, we wanted the growth and reinvestment, or the growth and reinvestment framework to reinforce that we are going to need a balance of infill and redevelopment as well as greenfield development to meet projected population growth. And then lastly, we were looking for this portion of the plan to help update our concurrency management system, really looking to improve clarity there, including a level of service for all of the services that the city provides, and really trying to help dispel some community misconceptions about what new development pays for and what it doesn't, really trying to be very clear that new development is required to help fund infrastructure and facilities related to demand for new services, but in terms of ongoing operational costs, that is not something that they are required to pay. Key to achieving those objectives for our growth and reinvestment framework was the update of our land use plan and really transitioning from eight to 12 land use categories and phasing out our current special planning area designation. And so as we look forward to the future, these categories really are going to help us understand how we are or aren't addressing housing gaps and needs over time, we'll be monitoring these. Also, we'll be able to really have a better approach to urban-rural interface issues, better address transitions at the urban fringe, and reinforce where we most want infill and redevelopment to occur. And as you can see on this slide, our new land use map with those categories, this was created based on translating our underlying zoning to the corresponding categories. Also, neighborhood plans help to inform this translation as well as our adopted planned unit development or specific plan district handbooks. Thinking about what are those largest changes that are reflected in this map, really as we move away from the special planning area designation and taking into account the direction that we received regarding employment, it really is to what our regional centers and our North Virginia Street Todd Corridor today. So moving away from ultimately that special planning area land use that's supported by mixed-use zoning to a more employment-oriented character. And additionally, the map before you tonight and included in your pocket does reflect those targeted changes that you reviewed and provided direction on, in, at your second meeting in September. And lastly, within the growth and reinvestment framework is the concurrency management system designed to provide those infrastructure and facilities needed to serve new development concurrent with the impact of that development. Additionally, it's this concurrency management system that looks to preserve level of service for existing residents. And here, our concurrency management system really consists of two key components. We have those concurrency requirements, and those directly apply to infrastructure and facilities. Those are what we can require to be conditioned for development, and ultimately, new development comes online, building those facilities or paying the requisite impact fees for them. And then our second key component are our level of service targets. And these level of service targets are intended to do a variety of different things. So first off, they help to inform, or not help to, they do in fact inform, the type and location of infrastructure and facilities needed to support new development subject to those concurrency requirements. And then they also help us during the development review process in guiding our discussions about service levels, what is going to be the impact of new development on those service levels. And then lastly, they help to serve as more broadly a long-range planning tool. We will be looking to monitor level of service over time, that's something we don't do on a regular basis, but is programmed into this master plan. And additionally, the new master plan looks forward to the implementation and monitoring of the plan's policy framework. These components are both new to the master plan and are really key to activating not only the master plan, but then also to help us come back, revisit the master plan, and really try to keep it a living document. So on the implementation side of things, the implementation plan serves as the city's clear commitment to implementation of the vision of the community as articulated in the master plan. It also provides a roadmap for the city as an organization, really helping us to collaborate, and at the same time, setting realistic expectations about all of the steps and actions that are needed to move forward with implementation of the community's vision over time. As organized, the implementation plan has really two levels of recommendations. The first is the implementation strategies themselves, and this is the big comprehensive list of all of the strategies needed to support the plan's guiding principle. They identify timing and funding. And then we have the second component, which is really intended to help focus the work of the city over the next one to two years. And so this is our seven priority initiatives, and these initiatives have really been drafted to reflect those most pressing issues that have emerged from our community engagement processes and reflect areas where we can work to accomplish different goals and policies in more than one part of the master plan, so trying to leverage our efforts there as we move forward. You'll remember that we used to have six priority initiatives, you can see them on this slide, but with the addition of a seventh. And so this was based on the direction that we received from the commission as well as the council to go ahead and add that seventh priority initiative to complete the city's Sustainability and Climate Action Plan and commit towards, to monitoring its progress over time. So really helping us to have better and more up-to-date information there so that it can inform decision-making. And here on the monitoring side of things, the plan also outlines regular progress reports to the Community Planning Commission and City Council on a regular basis. When we think about those progress reports, they would be taking a look at what's our status on our priority initiatives, taking a look at what are any updates that have occurred in our performance measures, are there any small updates that we need to undertake? And then we'd look towards major updates every five years, those would be a bit more of a kind of big look at the plan, include public involvement, do we need to make any adaptations to our guiding principles and goals, do we need to update our community profile to help inform the process as well as our implementation strategies? And in terms of, you know, why is monitoring important to implementation of the master plan, it really is a key component in terms of supporting transparency and accountability in decision-making, and it's something that the community has been keenly invested in, they really are excited to engage in this process further. And as I mentioned, to assist in that monitoring process, we do have performance measures included in this master plan. We have 17 key metrics that have been identified, and our goal with these measures is not to have a lot of measures, but really just have those that are most critical to helping us understand where we are in terms of evaluating the goals and policies of the master plan while not duplicating efforts of other entities. There's definitely a lot of other organizations that do track performance measures, and so we're trying to make sure that we're not being redundant there, and then also look towards what are the measures that we can regularly update because data is reliable and available over time. And lastly, in terms of the plan highlights here, the plan has a wealth of supporting information because we have a lot of information that was prepared as part of the master plan process. So lots of technical resources, our community profile, housing and employment reports, fiscal impact, analysis of key choices, and assessment of the master plan that we have today. But complementing that technical resource information, we have further detail on Reimagine Reno, some information on housing resources as well as neighborhood plan resources, and a glossary and a schedule of amendments so that we can very quickly understand all the changes that have been made to the plan over time. So shifting gears here now, away from the plan content and towards these outstanding policy issues. Here again, our goal tonight is to walk through the issues, but certainly come back for questions and discussion at the appropriate time. For each of the issues, what we'll do is provide some background on the issue, how does the draft plan address the issue, and then talk about the recommendation that's been developed to address the policy issue at hand. And in terms of how that recommendation was crafted, it's really been a collaborative process of the master plan team, including staff, our consultants at Clarion and Economic and Planning Systems, as well as our legal staff weighing in on all of these issues. So we have nine of these outstanding policy issues. They were raised at the last joint meeting of the Planning Commission and City Council held on July 27th. And you can see, we have some related to level of service, others that are more hydrologic related, and some that are a bit more focused on growth management. But in terms of why were these issues identified, really we wanted to bring forward these issues for further discussion. We were able to integrate a lot of the other feedback that we got just directly into the plan, but need more direction on these issues because they represent really a very significant shift away from the city's current policy of doing things, or issues that the community has really been very concerned about over time or really engaged in. And so we wanted to be very clear in terms of our plan, why did we go about crafting it the way that we did, and if we are recommending changes, what's the benefit of those changes? So that's why you have these nine policy issues before you tonight. So to take level of service targets versus standards first, at our July joint meeting, what we heard was a concern regarding the level of service targets in the growth and reinvestment framework, potentially creating some unrealistic service expectations if the city isn't able to fulfill those targets over time. And first off, it's really useful to discuss why the plan creates such a clear distinction between the concurrency requirements and the level of service targets, and why the term level of service targets has been utilized. So in updating the city's concurrency management system, our overall goal was again to be very clear that new development is required to construct infrastructure and facilities consistent with the concurrency requirement, not to fund staffing that helps to deliver infrastructure and services once they're, or infrastructure and facilities once they're in place. Additionally, we wanted to be very clear that level of service can be more fluid for some services than others. For instance, with police and fire service, budgetary fluctuations for staffing, different types of development, and then even geography all come into play in terms of what is your on-the-ground level of service. So that being said, what we have...
Mr. Chair, can I, how do you want to handle questions on the topic that she's raising?
So we contemplated Commissioner Marshall allowing Sienna to go through her presentation and then coming back to each one of these and discussing them as we go through. So she's giving us the summary.
No questions now.
Let's hold off on questions.
Okay. Okay, so we have our concurrency requirements, and those only apply to infrastructure and facilities. Then we have our level of service targets, and as I was discussing before, these are really used in a variety of different ways, not only to inform the type and location of facilities, also in development review and long-range planning efforts. At this point, the master plan team is supportive of using the targets, but including new language that does indicate that level of service target achievement is dependent on growth and funding. And really, this is just to be very realistic about services. We want to work to increase level of service over time, and level of service, as I mentioned, is different for different types of infrastructure and services. Putting a sewer pipe in the ground is much different than providing a fire station and then providing ongoing staffing over time. So moving on to our next issue related to levels of service, we also heard at the last joint meeting that evaluating the proposed level of service targets was difficult without information about our existing service levels. So what we did to help address this informational gap was prepare a table, it was included with your staff report outlining what are existing levels of service where they're known, what does the current master plan call for, and then what do the level of service targets in the draft master plan call for? And to just reiterate, in terms of developing the proposed targets that are included in the draft master plan, staff work very closely with our various city departments. the draft master plan, staff work very closely with our various city departments to reflect their departmental planning documents. A lot changed since our last master plan, so some of those newer efforts weren't reflected. Be very clear about what mitigation measures were being used, kind of get those into the master plan, and then also be cognizant of issues of resource allocation that have occurred in the past. So this table is provided for comparative reference. It's definitely detailed. And so that being said, the master plan team is not recommending that it become part of the existing master plan, but what we do think it does is serve as a starting point for this ongoing evaluation of level of service, which is teed up in our implementation strategies already in the master plan. So this, the start of revisiting level of service over time and better understanding where we are as a city. So our third policy issue related to level of service is more connected to roadways. And what we heard from the joint meeting at the end of July was that a lack of information about existing levels of service for all of our roadways, both regional and local, was making it a bit difficult to understand if potentially the city should be pursuing higher levels of service. So as drafted, the new plan specifies that level of service varies by type of roadway. And why did we take that approach? Namely, it's because for regional roads, RTC has adopted level of service standards and maintains a travel demand model so that they can analyze level of service for current and future conditions, intersections, as well as roadway segments. For local roadways, the city of Reno does not have adopted level of service standards, and we don't have that same type of modeling. And really, this is due to the fact that our local roadways carry the lowest traffic volumes of all types. And when we have development, say infill or redevelopment that comes forward, oftentimes our local roads will maintain a level of service B or C even as new development comes forward. And we have mechanisms to evaluate the impact of new development in terms of traffic impacts, and we do that through the development review process. So noting that, the master plan team is not recommending that we adopt local roadway service standards as part of the updated master plan. We do think it would be of benefit to add an existing policy that would apply citywide and therefore be under Guiding Principle 5, really encouraging the maximum utilization of roadways and as narrow of a design as possible to reduce city costs and enhance So moving along to closed basin flood management, what we heard in July was a concern that the draft plan wasn't strong enough around closed basin hydrology and storm water volumes. And so included in the draft plan, wanted to hit on the fact that we do have various policies and implementation strategies aimed at floodplain management protection and then also stormwater management. So you can see them here outlined on this slide. We have a citywide policy, 6.2E, that prohibits fill for floodplains unless elevations won't be increased. We also have a design principle that limits the impairment of floodplain protection functions when development occurs in those floodplains and outlines that what we'd like to see is restoration of previously provided flood protection functions if that's possible. Additionally, we have two design principles for sustainable development that relate to stormwater management, certainly looking for stormwater to be managed in such a way that onsite flooding is prevented, we're reducing our volumes entering the storm drain system, and then also retaining stormwater on-site. And also, we have a second design principle for sustainable development. They're really looking towards more the design of those stormwater management facilities, wanting them to be aesthetically pleasing, provide kind of multiple benefits to the end user, whether that be recreational, riparian aquatic habitats and the like. And lastly, we have an implementation strategy, you know, once we get done with the master plan, to take a look at our floodplain management ordinances, revise those as necessary. It's actually coupled with our drainage wave protection standards, so we'd be trying to evaluate each of those things at the same time. So to complement these policies, what the master plan team is recommending is to update that citywide policy, 6.2E, that applies to fill in floodplains, to really clearly state it applies both to the Truckee River Basin as well as to closed basins. And then we think two implementation strategies are useful as well. So again, kind of directing the city's work after the master plan is adopted. So the first of these would look to update our stormwater management ordinances, to evaluate our runoff retention calculations and mitigation strategies for closed basins specifically. And also another implementation strategy to review and evaluate any updates that might be useful to the Truckee Meadows Regional Drainage Manual, and that would be in collaboration with our regional partners. And additionally, we had a policy issue regarding private water purveyors. With regards to those private water purveyors, what we heard was a concern expressed that the new master plan allows for development to be served by the Truckee Meadows Water Authority, or TMA, or by a private water purveyor, and that's consistent with the city's current practice and policy. And the master plan was drafted in this way because TMA's retail service area does not extend to all locations in the city's current municipal boundaries or its sphere of influence. And for background, it's that retail service area within which TMA is obligated to provide service, and it's within TMA's sole discretion to expand that retail service area. That's not a choice that we have. So noting that we can't require that expansion, the master plan team is recommending a new policy and an implementation strategy that relate to water supply, really to provide some enhanced clarity around the city's policy there. So the new policy would seek to support efficient and reliable management of surface and groundwater resources with a variety of different components. So really trying to promote TMA's efforts and directives under their cooperating agreement, discouraging new or expanded private water purveyors, noting that there is concern about the long-term viability and quality associated with some of those water sources. Also encouraging new development that is served by a private water purveyor to design those water systems to TMA standards. The implementation strategy proposed would be to design new development to support the provision of a sustainable water source, and that really would help us during development review and then as we look forward to potential code updates that might be helpful in that way as well. So shifting here to our growth management approach, we heard concerns that the plan doesn't go far enough in terms of defining a clear strategy for our next greenfield growth areas in terms of making infrastructure and services available, and coupled with that, a desire to know if we have any policy options that would disincentivize greenfield development at the urban edge. So first off, the updated plan was really developed to take a more responsible approach to growth management while also working within a framework of significant limitations in terms of growth management. So I want to go into a bit of detail on those limitations, provide that background. So what we have in place and what we were working with in terms of drafting the plan is an established portion of the city's Truckee Meadows Service Area, which includes the city's sphere of influence and its municipal boundaries. And for the most part, that boundary has been in place since about 2006. There's been some changes, but the general footprint has been largely the same. So since 2006, the city has made decisions within that boundary. We've moved forward with applying land use designations and zoning designations and annexing land. And in terms of the zoning that has been applied to a lot of those locations, it has been PUD zoning. We've adopted PUD handbooks associated with the land, and many of those handbooks did not have time limitations associated with them. And so the piece here that's really significant to consider is when we think about state law, we do have provisions that do not allow the city to unreasonably impair the reliance on those PUDs. Additionally, in terms of serving new development, we have challenges in terms of just a general lack of infrastructure and service levels in greenfield locations as well as revenue limitations that make it difficult for the city to consistently proactively invest in infrastructure to help guide the timing of growth. But that same, those same revenue limitations also make it difficult for the city and create a reliance on new development to help fund existing services over time. So when we think about all of these issues together, what we wanted to do was design the draft plan to support future growth, again, through a combination of infill and redevelopment as well as greenfield development, better align greenfield development with the city's goals in the master plan, and then also promote fiscally responsible growth. And this is using a variety of different policies and implementation strategies that you can see here on this slide. So to go through those in a bit more detail, we have citywide growth tiers or priority growth areas that help to prioritize where would the city like to grow and also help to prioritize infrastructure investments to those locations. And of note here, our infill and redevelopment priority areas are kind of at the top of that list. We also have a variety of new parameters for greenfield development. Certainly, using our updated land use categories is going to give us a much better sense of the type and location of growth that we are approving. Also, the implementation strategies look to have a standard PUD timing and phasing policy that we can apply, also looking to have a fiscal impact analysis submitted for large master plan amendments, planned unit developments, and a standardization of the factors for fiscal impact analysis, really trying to bring forward as much information as we can at the time that those master plan amendments or planned unit developments come forward. Additionally, we have implementation strategies that look towards some general targets for planned unit developments. What is the city generally looking for in terms of mix of uses, housing types? Additionally, the plan is crafted to expand the tools that the city has to proactively plan for infrastructure and services. Again, the land use categories are really key to that, helping to create a better connection between what we're planning for and what Public Works is planning for. Monitoring our supply of land over time with those categories will help that. Also, understanding, you know, what do we have in terms of our supply and where might infrastructure go first? The plan also calls for a more active management of the city's sphere of influence boundary. This would be done in part by the city and in part by working with our regional partners. It's not a boundary that we have sole authority over. Additionally, the plan calls for, through its implementation strategies, kind of shortlists of key infrastructure improvements that would help support development in our priority growth areas, and those would be based on more detailed analyses of needed infrastructure. And then lastly, we're really looking to the plan to also expand the city's ability, excuse me, to fund infrastructure and services over time, exploring mechanisms such as variable sewer connection fees, creating a much closer connection between the master plan and capital improvement plan, and then, and this is one of our priority initiatives, supporting property tax structure changes so that we do have revenues that can help better support the provision of services over time as well as infrastructure maintenance and funds for maybe more proactive investment in terms of infrastructure. So given all of these various policy components, what the master plan team is recommending is to keep generally this growth management policy framework as drafted in the updated master plan. We do think it would be of benefit to expand one of our implementation strategies. It was targeted at the development of kind of a comprehensive public services, facilities, and infrastructure plan or plans, depending on how those are ultimately crafted, really trying to be more direct that this work should help inform the overall timing in terms of the growth management strategy that we have in place. And moving on next to an item that's also connected to growth, we have heard comments from the last joint meeting that the city's annexation policy should outline that all annexations be included in the city's seven-year annexation program or potentially the city's sphere of influence. And so just to provide a bit of additional background here, there are two ways to annex per state statute. The first is by initiation of the city or less than 100% of property owners, not only less than 100%, but more than 50%. And under this process, lands must be included in the city's seven-year annexation program, and requests to annex must come forward through the Annexation Commission. And we have very few annexations that move forward under this process. Our second method for annexation is initiated by 100% of property owners. This is pursuant to an alternative procedure specified in state law that requires annexations need only be contiguous to the city's municipal boundaries. These are often referred to as voluntary annexations. At this point, they're heard by council, and it's really through this method that almost all of the city's requests for annexations come forward. And so because they only need be contiguous to the city, they don't have to be included in the city's current sphere of influence, they don't need to be included in the city's seven-year annexation program. So as drafted, the new master plan really guides annexation through a citywide policy. 2.1D is the policy number, and it specifies a variety of criteria that need to be considered as annexations come forward. And we've made a lot of changes to that policy from our current master plan, really tried to bolster the level of information that is provided to decision-makers at the time of annexation. So we're trying to encourage the concurrent submittal of a master plan amendment if intensification of land use is desired, so we have a lot better information on land use that is desired at the time of annexation so that we can consider those fiscal impacts at the same time, other criteria related to neighborhood character as well. So why did the master plan team utilize this policy approach? One big reason is because it's fiscally advantageous for the city to have flexibility regarding future annexations. We did a lot of very detailed work in terms of fiscal impacts of growth to help inform the master plan policies. And so as detailed in that work, the property tax structure in Nevada really produces significantly higher revenues from new development as compared to older development, even when market values are exactly the same. And so this does create a reliance of the city on new development to help maintain kind of consistent revenue levels over time. So in considering this issue tonight, what we're recommending is really kind of, the first question that needs to be determined is, does the Planning Commission desire criteria in policy 2.1D that further guides annexations? And if the answer is yes, then the master plan team is recommending that that criteria be connected to the city's sphere of influence, and this is for a variety of reasons. First, if we do that, there is the potential that we would reduce the denial of a master plan amendment by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency. There's the potential that if we submit the master plan amendment and we don't have capacity in our current TMSA SOI, that it could be denied. And that could, in fact, reduce jurisdictional conflict upfront. And then if we were to move forward with the seven-year annexation program, even though it can only be updated once a year, we think that would definitely put a lot more work into updating that plan on a more regular basis. And so moving along here to Renostead Airport development potential, at the July joint meeting, we heard some concern expressed about the level of development that could potentially move forward at the Renostead Airport and that such development doesn't pay property taxes to the... doesn't pay property taxes to the city. So, in terms of background here, non-aviation development potential has been contemplated at the Reno-Stead Airport since the early 2000s. It was designated as a regional center in the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. We moved forward as a city to master plan it as a regional center, adopted mixed-use zoning that is really supportive of a wide variety of non-aviation-related uses. And so, with all of that work in place, the Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority in 2016 did enter into a master developer agreement with Dermody Properties to develop the Reno-Stead Airport Business Park. So, plans are underway to move forward with that property having additional development. It's also a property that plays a really critical role in the city's industrial land supply. From our employment study, we know that it accounts for about 60% of the city's industrial land supply. So, the master plan team is recommending that we continue forward the approach of allowing this type of development at the Reno-Stead Airport. We do think that there's value in a new implementation strategy that really sets us up to explore and evaluate alternative service options or financial mechanisms in partnership with the Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority in the future. So, we are recommending that. And lastly, we heard concern about the level of discretionary, or the lack of discretionary review in downtown Reno, and a potential desire to have a greater level of review going forward. So, as drafted, the new master plan really carries forward the approach that we have in our existing master plan, allowing most projects in downtown Reno to proceed forward without discretionary review, and that's really very much to encourage infill redevelopment and overall revitalization. So we are recommending that this approach be maintained. It's best practice to streamline the development review process for infill and redevelopment, really to reduce time and resources for those projects, because they face some significant challenges, whether that be the cost of land being higher, whether that be infrastructure issues that are unknown, whether that be just more challenges with financing when you have a variety of uses. So definitely more complex projects. We do, however, think that we can expand an existing implementation strategy that does carry forward that approach of little discretionary review and say, okay, when we get to Title 18 in terms of evaluating the development code, what would be some potential project triggers or design review triggers that we can possibly consider? So we wanted to kind of tee up that work, note that the general approach should carry forward, but we can also have further discussions about that as we move forward into implementation. So, to start wrapping things up, staff's recommendation tonight is to adopt the new City of Reno master plan with direction on the outstanding policy issues that I've been discussing, as well as any other changes that the Planning Commission feels is necessary to include in the plan. Also recommending repeal of the existing master plan, and recommending the same in terms of adoption and repeal to the city council, certainly subject to conformance review by the Regional Planning Commission. So, if the plan does move forward tonight, wanted to outline some next steps. We would be moving to city council on November 8th, where they would be considering the recommendation from this body. If the council decides to make changes from the adoption draft that's brought forward by the Planning Commission, those changes need to come back to the Planning Commission for the consideration of a report, and that's really within the Planning Commission's discretion as to whether or not the commission would like to provide that report, but we would provide that opportunity on December 7th if, in fact, changes were made. If a report is produced by the commission, we would need to take that forward, actually quite quickly, and so that would be on December 13th for the council. And then, kind of flowing out of that timeline, we would submit the master plan to Regional Planning for Conformance Review. That would likely be in early 2018, potentially even March of 2018, depending on their schedule. So, on this slide, you have kind of a suggested order for public comment and discussion, suggesting public comment first and discussion after. I did want to highlight, though, for tonight's discussion, that staff is looking for your direction on those outstanding policy issues or anything else that should be modified in the plan. We do have a variety of staff with us, not only from the City of Reno, but also the Truckee Meadows Water Authority, to help answer any questions that the commission might have. And with that, I'll go ahead and take my leave and be ready for questions at the appropriate time.
Okay. Thanks, Sienna, very much for that presentation. Great job. So, per Sienna's suggested agenda here, we'll move forward with public comment then, and I will open it up, and the first one I have on my stack here is Eric Holland. Following Eric will be Rob Fitzgerald.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Eric Holland, I'm a local artist, and I, my birthday's November 8th. So, what I've heard about this master plan sounds good. I'm impressed by the presentation that was just given by Sienna. I like some of the points that she's made, and it'd be a nice birthday present if you adopt this master plan and forward it to the city council. I'm a fan of big hair, loud music, and there's a Cinderella song that goes, "The more things change, the more they stay the same." And I was here 11 years ago hearing some of the same things that I'm hearing tonight, the people upset about growth in their backyard, effects of growth on people's quality of life and all that. But there's one thing that's very different from 11 years ago, and what's different is that today, we're building an industrial base here in northern Nevada, and I love that. There's some issues with it, such as high rents and the fact that you can't take a bus to Tesla yet, but basically, I love the fact that we're creating jobs for the kids that took art classes with me, and now they're Facebook. I have these pictures of these proud kids, 20-year-olds, with their badges, and they're happy about these jobs, although some of them say they can't get there. I don't know, they say, "I have a job, but I can't get there." That might be a story to their girlfriend, or it might be true. But as we implement the master plan, let's implement the master plan and have public service, scheduled public transportation to the places where the jobs are. A lot of you, a lot of faces here are familiar. I've been fighting for a long time for the Wyndham Mucker Ranch/Marshall Ranch area, and I surprised a lot of people about a month ago, after 10 years of saying, "Fix that crazy map," the one that has the flung the City of Reno, I said, "Don't take it out of the sphere of influence." Well, I actually was misdirected there, because it's consistent with good planning to roll back, for the City of Reno to roll back out of that area. But what bothered me a lot is that the City of Reno is rolling back out of one of the ranches, but not the other ranch, which is why I want it, I want, what I would like to see is the City of Reno to roll their sphere of influence back from both the Marshall Ranch and the Wyndham Mucker Ranch. I'd support that. Because it wasn't consistent, I didn't support it. I fell in love with the area this last winter. I hiked up there a lot with Amy, and I saw antelope, hundreds of them. It's beautiful up there, and you guys know that, too. I've already talked to a local casino about doing a tour, I can't think of what, oh, well, it has a name, but they're interested in a tour where you go out and gamble and gamble, the antelope gamble, and then you take them back to town and they gamble. Anyway, I support the new master plan. It sounds like it's been very thoughtfully done. I was impressed by Sienna's comments. Private water worries me, and thank you for your time. Good night.
Thanks very much, Eric. Rob, followed by Ivan Barovalev?
Rob Fitzgerald. While sitting through the presentation, I just realized how I underestimated, I just forgot what an extraordinary task putting this together was. I've been to many of these meetings and, you know, the hearings and presentations and whatnot, and it's funny, over the year, you know, the time, what has it been, two years this has been going on? I, you sort of forget how much work has gone into it. And I just came here to thank staff and the Planning Commission for the efforts that went into this, in particular, Sienna, who's been very patient with me. I've taken up a lot of her time, but just incredible piece of work, looking forward to working within it. I just want to say thanks, and I'm going to get out of here while you guys discuss it, because I think you've got this thing in pretty good hands, and it's in pretty good shape. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Chairman, and respected commission members. I am a almost 10-year Reno resident, I'm a downtown property owner and resident of downtown, and I haven't read, of course, the whole master plan, because that's beyond, I'm presenting myself here, not any corporation, so that's beyond my expertise.
Ivan, can you just talk a little bit closer? I know you're a tall guy, but maybe pull that up there.
Okay. Is it better now?
That's a much better, thank you.
And I would like to just point out one thing that I believe I have some knowledge of it. I have an economic and finance background, I'm a UNR, I have a master from UNR, and particularly in the area where I live, it's, I'm going to talk about some details on page 105. I'm not sure if I can present it here or not. It's about university district within the several districts proposed, and what here is specifically stated is, I'm going to speak about floor area ratio proposed here. So we're talking about three districts, Entertainment District, Innovation District, and University District, and they have very different floor area ratios, minimum of three, maximum of four. And, okay, I don't have much time, but I'll try to speak much faster. So, the land yield is direct function of the FAR ratio, and this here, University District, is a walkable distance. We're going to get a new engineering building here, new business building here, and by having this very strict limits on the floor area ratio, we will not be able to support the critical mass activities, and here, the opportunities for housing. I can just, we have one more minute left. In the last couple of years, we had four projects proposed or developed around the university campus. That's Capstone Project, Knight &amp; Evans, University Housing Group, Virginia and Sixth, Identity, Virginia and Fifteenth, Standard at Reno, Lake and Sixth, and neither one of them will fit into this FAR, what we're proposing here. And this is the walkable distance, we can house probably thousands of kids here, that they can just walk without any impact to infrastructure, no parking required, nothing special. And by having this strict proposed FAR ratio, we are going to potentially postpone development, and we want to have a density redevelopment and have a swift development, because this has been, you know, probably, you know, going to postpone any other development. If, there's not much time, if I can provide more detail, if anybody requires, I develop some, for a living, I do some financial models, and if I have to provide more information, I'll be happy to provide, and Sienna knows how to reach me. I would just like to point that out, because other two districts, Entertainment and Innovation District, don't have ratios, and my suggestion would be specifically to be maximum instead of four to seven, and most of these developments I listed would fit into that range, but not in between three and four.
Okay. We've got your comment, and
Okay. Thank you very much.
... noted it, and we can circle back to you with questions. Craig Smerez, sorry about the last name there, Craig.
Wyndham Mucker Ranch is clearly an example of bad annexation. You know, we really don't need a City of Reno 30 miles away from itself. The proposals in Reimagine Reno's Outstanding Policy Issues on Annexation are good as far as they go, and I would like to see them adopted. I would also like to see more specific language added. I would like to see a more robust requirement and definition of substantial contiguous annexation and an exclusion of annexation above a predetermined elevation. Clearly defined limits would prevent the most damaging abuses of sprawl. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last request to speak form I have. Does anyone else wish to make a public comment before I close it for this master plan adoption item? Seeing none, I will close it. Sienna, if you could just bring up that slide that had the agenda on it, so we stay on task here.
There it is.
So, as we bring it back to the commission, following Sienna's outline here, and what we're looking for here is sort of general questions or discussion, and then we'll dive into those specific policy issues. So, let's start with just any sort of general questions related to the master plan itself that fall outside of that policy issue range. Mr. Marshall?
Let me know if this is the appropriate time for this, but I had an edit to chapter one that I wanted to offer. We can do that after we get through the main substantive issues. Do you want it now?
Let's do it.
Okay, this would just be, this is on chapter, excuse me, chapter one, page 10, and there's for major amendments to the master plan, there's a set of criteria that are really derived from NRS 278-210. And I was just going to propose to add, and I got some better language from council, but to reflect 278.210, which is change, and the addition would be changed conditions require such amendment, which would be one of the factors that would be evaluated. That's just bringing in to it a lot of the other factors, and I thought, from my experience, having background on what is really the changed conditions that are driving this request frames why, and gives the planning commissioners and staff the background as to why is it that we should be changing policy that's articulated in the master plan once we adopt it? There's a whole bunch of other factors, but I'd like to offer that to be complete under NRS 278-210-4, that we should add changed conditions, and I have some language that I can offer that accomplishes that end. That was it.
Okay. Might need to circle back to that.
Yep.
So let's hang on to that. Other general questions, comments, discussion on the master plan itself? Mr. Johnson?
I do want to follow up on the question that Ivan posed, of Sienna, that the comment about the FAR ratio and that particular portion, if there was specific reasoning behind the limitation in terms of where we're at?
Yeah, so, absolutely. Basically, as far as the new master plan goes, one of the goals was to carry forward the policy work that was done around the update of the UNR Regional Center Plan in 2016. There's been some kind of shifting of boundaries. That regional center in 2016 took some area from the downtown Reno area with the Downtown Action Plan coming through that area, kind of took that area back, but But the general intent is that connecting UNR to downtown Reno through a university district is desired. And the areas are generally the same. So when that 2016 amendment to the UNR Regional Center Plan came forward, the desire on intensity in terms of FAR was to really have kind of a human scale orientation of those buildings and really create kind of a connection between UNR through down, you know, kind of as you start through downtown Reno traveling south, as you start getting into the entertainment district, which has a much higher intensity. Certainly, one thing to note, and I did connect in with Nathan Gilbert on this because he was the staff member leading that amendment to the UNR plan. In terms of the should language, there was a conversation previously about allowing potentially higher levels of intensity through a special use permit process in the future. So it's not necessarily that you couldn't achieve higher levels, but in terms of trying to promote that kind of pedestrian-friendly, human-scale design that a range of three to four in terms of the FAR was desirable. And I think of note, you know, the UNR Regional Center Plan had a lot of outreach and work with university staff. We carried that forward through the development of the master plan. There was also university engagement in the downtown action plan. So this isn't a policy that we've heard to date any concern about just yet. This is the first time we've kind of heard that potentially there might be some concerns around that upper limit of an FAR of four. So it's generally the rationale.
So just as a follow-up to that, I think some of the areas in that specific portion are targeted. I think the gentleman mentioned, one of, you know, a building from UNR is planned to go in there, which could exceed the FAR for that because it's a state property. Is there any, do they, does that even fall under our purview if that comes into play? I just, I don't want to, obviously, as you said, UNR has weighed in on this. I don't know if there's discussion or if, you know, there's a limitation in terms of their ability to utilize that space as the connection that we're looking for.
Yeah, so, you know, UNR has acquired property north of I-80 in terms of lands that are in the university district. Those lands that are north of I-80 are identified as kind of that gateway precinct district. And certainly, we don't have review authority over building permits that come through UNR. We don't process zoning changes for them or anything like that. But we hope that as development comes forward that they are using our adopted zoning codes. And Claudia probably has a little bit more background on that as well.
Yeah, I'm just going to jump in really quick. Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager. They are actually required to follow our zoning requirements and master plan requirements. However, we don't do permitting for them. So we provide them with the information, but we have no way to check on it.
Okay, thank you. So I guess then, just as the follow-along staff is looking at the language with the should portion of that as acceptable, thinking that it will allow for, you know, some discussion in the future in terms of how that is looked at for future development?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we're going to circle back on the second bullet because I think any direction on any plan modifications will potentially flow out of the third bullet since there didn't sound like there were any other, circle back to Commissioner Marshals also. But let's get on to the outstanding policy issues in Exhibit B. Sienna gave us the presentation. As she mentioned, we have staff from other city departments, other agencies here to answer questions, help us work through these. So are there, let's start, let's just walk down the list. There are nine of them. We'll walk down the list. Level of service targets versus standards. Commissioner, questions or discussion on those? Commissioner Hawkins?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. One question, Sienna. We're looking at level of service and what triggers it. There's been so many developments in the North Valleys that are so small. But if you clump those together, then we've got a trigger. Is there something we can do about that in the future to where we fix that?
In terms of levels of service, one of the things that is included in the master plan is kind of a proactive monitoring of those levels of service over time. So that, you know, when you do have developments that come forward over time, you can go back in, evaluate changed conditions, understand what your levels of service might be. And the city really would be taking the lead more proactively there with regards to, say, police and fire. We have RTC that does that type of monitoring on the regional roadway network, you know, as part of their kind of very structured planning efforts over time. And then, you know, as we look towards level of service, say for kind of other services, like wastewater service, it's a little bit different. It's really providing that connection to the service. And then when that, once that connection is made, you know, we do have those user fees that help to maintain that infrastructure over time. So really, you kind of have to take a kind of service-by-service look and get a sense of, does the service have kind of a very strong infrastructure component to provide it? Does the service have maybe a stronger staffing component to ultimately provide it? So for those that definitely have that staffing component, which I think is what you're talking about, we've tried to really program that in. And that's something that we want to do so that we can inform our city planning, our city budgeting process to have a sense of where we are and, you know, where we're looking to go and how we can get there over time.
Thank you.
Mr. Marshall?
Sienna, you kind of drew this distinction, very sharp distinction, between provision of infrastructure and actual provision of services. City provides services and the developer provides the infrastructure necessary for the provision of those services. And can you expand a little bit about how then the combination of those two things work for concurrency purposes? So is it just, does concurrency depend on just payment of the fee or construction of the sewer pipe as opposed to the actual provision of the underlying service?
So the overall goal of the concurrency management system is to provide both infrastructure and facilities and ultimately services in line with growth. However, that being said, there are different responsibilities in doing so. And so as we look towards those infrastructure and facilities, the responsibility of putting in that infrastructure really falls to the developer. And so those are components that we can require through the development review process. Certainly, expanding, say, public safety services over time in line with new developments is what we are looking to do. What we've tried to note is just that it's a little bit different in terms of an actual concurrency requirement. We cannot require through the development review process that a developer fund staffing levels. Say for police and fire, that's something that the city needs to evaluate on a year-over-year basis through the budgetary process. And so we have a variety of policies in the updated plan that look to not only tracking those levels of service of time, or levels of service over time as I've been talking about, but expanding public safety services as growth occurs. And then, you know, as we go through the development and review process, certainly using our level of service targets to evaluate what would be the impact of new development. And that really goes down to what, would the city be able to expand in terms of those services from that budgetary perspective?
Here's my core worry, and it has to do with consistency with the regional plan, which is going to be a further step. And it's not, so for what I understand you to be saying is that we can find concurrency, in other words, approved development, consistent with the master plan, which has to be consistent with the regional plan, based not necessarily on the actual matching up of the provision of the service, but just on payment or implementation of the infrastructure, which sometimes might be the same thing, but often is not. So for example, policy 3.51 of the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan basically requires that the master plan, this master plan, must ensure that necessary public facilities and services to support new development are or will be available and adequate at the time the impacts of the new development occur. So while I can appreciate we can't ask developers to fund the provision of services, can we adopt a master plan consistent with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan that doesn't marry those two things together and say, you've got to actually provide the services concurrent with the impact, not just the infrastructure?
And that analysis of whether or not the city can expand services is something that we evaluate on a case-by-case basis through that development review process. It's part of saying, how can we serve the development? Can the infrastructure be extended? Can the services be extended? So I think the key point is it's just not something that we can require from the development, which is why we really try and create that distinction. And I think, as I mentioned, there's a lot of misconceptions out in the community in terms of what development pays for. You know, we often hear growth pays for growth. And there was definitely some folks that didn't understand that, you know, the city needs to come online through the budgetary process and provide ongoing staffing to serve new development. So we wanted to take this opportunity to provide that clarity in the plan. But both components need to be considered when you're saying, how do we as a city provide infrastructure and facilities as well as services to support new development?
What I worry about, particularly with the added new language, is that we're sending almost a message that these two things can be divorced, that we can approve a project that doesn't meet concurrency requirements. And for me, concurrency requirements is that the service has to be, and the infrastructure has to be in place by the time that the level of, that the impacts occur. And while I understand that there can be a confusion regarding, okay, that level of service, then therefore need, you know, if I'm not, if I don't have that level of service in Ward 1, or it's already built out, you know, hey, what's going on? But there could be a diff, what I'm worried about is that, and I don't know where you guys are going on the revamp of the regional plan, but if we are divorcing those two things and we're not getting the service at the time of the impacts, then I think we have a major problem with our concurrency findings and our concurrency program. And I understand that while we can't, while we can't require the developer to pay for services, you know, I don't, I worry that this can be read, that we can approve a project that won't, you know, that those services won't be delivered regardless of who pays for them at the time the impact occurs. That's what, and that's what kind of we hear about, right? When, when there's this disconnect between the payment of, let's say, road fees and, well, they sit in a pot and nobody does anything, and we suffer the impacts, and we've, you know, that's okay. So I think what I'm worried about in our presentation of this, and what I would like to have a discussion about is whether or not we think the master plan really does marry those two concepts so we can be consistent with the direction of the regional plan, which, in which I think everyone kind of, at least my sense of the planning commission since I've been on it, is that's what we want. We want the, we want the, by the time housing units come online, we want the impacts to be addressed to whatever level of service we think appropriate. I'm sorry for the little soliloquy there, but that's, that's my major concern with this concurrency discussion and where we're heading.
So Commissioner Marshall's raised some points. What I would like as we roll through each of these nine items is to get, not necessarily agreement, but land at a place where we can, you know, provide direction to city council because that's what we're charged with doing here tonight. So Commissioner Marshall has raised the point. I would be interested in hearing from the rest of the commissioners in response to that or staff, if there are any other responses. Commissioner Marshall, I'll respond to that. And I can tell you that your concern related to the provision of services related to new growth came up at a recent meeting, and that was a big concern for me. I couldn't make master plan findings based on it in the existing master plan. And I don't know about where it would land with the new master plan with this language. So I think in a way I share your concerns if I understand where you're going. And that provision of services is a concern for me, obviously, having stated that before. So that's all I'm going to say at that point. Commissioner Wieske?
Thank you. Janelle, I have a question for you, please. In this discussion, if we, if we talk about sewer, and in a lot of the projects we see, it's conditioned that at the time of final map or first map or how, depending what the project is, there's a condition that says sewer will be provided at that time. Most of the time, we have some type of a verbal commitment during questions, either from you or the local sewer treatment plant manager, whomever says, yes, we have the capacity to do so. What are we changing? What are we, are we making any changes in this master plan amendment in policies to move away from that? Or are we doing anything to bolster that to ensure that the services are going to be there and be provided before the impact occurs? You know, concurrently. We've got a lot of maps, a lot of approvals out there that aren't being built. Those aren't creating impacts yet. So can you expand on that, please?
Yeah, Janelle Thomas, Senior Civil Engineer, for the record. My understanding is that we are not changing the current policies that we have in place for that, for sewer service, that we would still during the development review, review them with our current systems that are in place and then determine what the, what the infrastructure needs would or would not be. Our standards right now indicate that when we have a development come in, the developer has an obligation to provide documentation that they can properly sewer their project and that that project has to be shown to be able to effectively and efficiently, with the capacity that's available, get into an interceptor-level system. And that may be getting too far into the weeds for this particular discussion. But typically, an interceptor-level pipe would be anything that's eighteen inches and above. And we would consult with our public works staff to determine the available capacity at that point of connection. But the development would be responsible for showing that they can design it to get to that particular infrastructure.
Okay, so now let's switch gears and go to water. And let's hypothetically say we have a project on the west side of town that may have
that may have public services or wells or anything like that. And here we are promoting the use of Tamwa.
Encouraging.
Encouraging the use of Tamwa. Semantics of words.
Right.
I mean, how, how will the planning commission look at projects in the future on whether or not services are available at the time we're looking at a project?
So again, I think that we're going to go back to the process that we have in place, which the city doesn't necessarily have jurisdiction over the will serve letters, which are issued for water service. And I may defer to John Enlow from Tamwa, because he's here and probably has more knowledge regarding this particular subject matter. But staff generally will rely upon those will serve letters to be provided by a water purveyor. In this particular case, it appears that we are moving in the direction of encouraging Tamwa to be the service provider of, of choice versus a private water purveyor. But I generally rely upon the state water engineer to identify whether the development has in its ownership or has the capability to purchase proper and adequate water quantities and for them. Do you want to hear from John Enlow, maybe?
Sure. John, if, if you have something that can add to that, if you don't, shake your head and I won't call you up. Okay?
Okay.
I saw a shake of the head, so I'm not going to call him up, Mr. Chairman.
I saw it, too.
Thank you. That's enough questions for now.
Mr. Marshall?
Well, I think Commissioner Wieske's questions illustrate a couple of things, that for some services, it's easy to condition a permit on provision of the service at the time, you know, at the time things come online. What, what concerns me about the way that the concurrency management system is kind of laid out in the master plan now is that particularly the use of the word targets, that it provides perhaps more flexibility in trying to establish a clear, equitable, you know, standard that's evenly applied across all developers. And so you're not in this game of trying to play favorites with one or the other. I think water sewer, you have to have the capacity. And if you don't have the capacity to sewer, then you can't go ahead and build. I would like, that to me is concurrency. And I'd like to have that kind of policy articulated within the, the master plan so that we're not, you know, negotiating each one on an ad hoc basis over some kind of target. So I'm, and, and so to me, it's, it's a clear articulation of kind of the policy that Commissioner Wieske's questions articulate. When they come in, they've got to have the, the water ticket. They've got to have the sewer ticket. They've got to have, you know, the road capacity ticket. You know, when they come in for, or when they actually build the units, when the units come online. And that these things are provided, you know, that the, that, okay, you can build a fire station, but if the city can't provide, you know, a staff, then the service is not being provided, and the unit shouldn't go out. Now, the difficulty comes in is, well, then how do you marry up? You know, it's kind of a timing of development question, in my mind at least. And so development shouldn't come forward unless the city has the capacity to provide the service, even though, you know, or when the, when the developer provides the fire station. That's kind of my hitch right now.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Wieske?
Just to support what Commissioner Marshall is saying, if you think about the months of June, July, and August, when we heard about a PU, we, we listened to a PUD and we worked through the elements of a PUD for the, for the North Valleys area. And one of the things the citizens brought in public comment more times than not was the existing fire response time, the existing police response time. And if we allow more residents out there, we're only going to increase that response time. When in turn, based upon testimony we heard from RFD and RPD, by putting Reno out a, a new station, fire station and substation with police, it would actually enhance and support Washoe County Sheriff's Department and the Truckee Meadows Fire Authority out there. So the response times could be less for those people who are not getting enough service now. So, but that's a big project. We, I doubt that, I don't know, unless we, there's land to be annexed in. I don't think anybody sitting on this commission tonight will ever see a project that big again. I could be wrong. But we, at that point, don't have the opportunity to ma, to, to marriage into that document a staffed, equipment-staffed fire station, an equipment or an, an eight hundred square foot substation available to be staffed by RPD, those types of things. But those, to me, are things that should be part of this master plan and a commitment that if we, the planning commission, make for growth on a small scale or on a large scale, and even when we make recommendations for that growth, that city council has a means to support it. That's, that to me is what this, this little piece of the master plan should include. Although we don't have control over the financial end of it for staffing, we're setting up the future budgets to either be over or under budget, I guess, if you will. So I agree with Commissioner Marshall's questioning of where it's going. I don't know how we get to an answer. That's my, my next question after discussion.
Mr. Wieske, in response to your comment, and I, I appreciate that. And that was something that, you know, I struggled with in our conversation for that item that you mentioned. And the one thing that came up for me was when we talk about levels of service and maybe, I mean, I guess it's sort of implied in here, but it's not specifically called out, is that certain levels of service and being able to meet our concurrency requirements, and maybe this is a little bit anecdotal, but it seems to me that it's easier to meet some of the things that Commissioner Marshall was talking about in terms of providing those services when those actions are in areas where those services exist already. And in that case, we were looking at an area where the service needed to be new, not only the infrastructure to meet those concurrency requirements and the response times, as you mentioned, but there was that additional component of actually having the staffing to, you know, provide those services, to actually provide the service. And I think it, for me, it was more difficult because of the location. So Sienna, maybe that's a question to you. Does, does the master plan address that element of locational difficulties related to levels of service?
Yeah, so I think there's a variety of policies that really, in the citywide policy framework, under goal two point one and then also two point three, that really help to, to complement the growth and reinvestment framework and help to make these decisions about not only expanding into an area that needs new infrastructure and facilities, but also needs additional staffing to help provide certain services. So just to kind of point you to a few policies. On page twenty-four of kind of the, the clean draft of the plan, we have our concurrency management system policy. So, you know, really looking certainly to requiring adequate infrastructure and facilities being provided by the developer as, in areas that are certainly priority growth areas and then areas outside of those priority growth areas. But then also prohibiting development approval when such development does not meet the concurrency requirements and level of service targets established in the master plan and/or the city is unable to provide and maintain requisite levels of service. And so this really gets down to, you have to evaluate what the impact of development is going to be on those existing levels of service. There is certainly, as Commissioner Wieske was noting, the possibility that level of service might actually be increased. But we do need to evaluate that on a case by case basis in conjunction, certainly with this policy, as well as policy two point one C, also on page twenty-four, noting that those level of service targets be applied uniformly to new land development and established areas of the community, depending upon location and existing levels of service. And then also wanted to point out that we have on page twenty-seven under policy two point three D, which is, you'll note, there's no two point three D. It's just services. It should say public safety services, so just catching this now. It's amazing you can look through a document so many times and still have one small thing hanging out there. But basically, ensure the city's capacity to provide public safety and emergency services expands in line with level of service targets. And then, to the extent possible, development patterns and intensities that allow for efficient and cost-effective expansion of services should be given preferences, preference, excuse me, over others that are less efficient and more costly to serve. And I think, you know, this is definitely always a challenge in terms of new development. It's certainly easier to say the developer is going to be putting in our wastewater lines. They have to connect to a wastewater treatment facility, and that wastewater treatment facility needs capacity. And so that needs to also be in place. And, you know, that they need to connect to public water service or another water service provider. They need to put in their local roadways and pay their regional road impact fees. But when we get to, you know, what happens beyond once that fire station is put in and maybe a police reporting station is put in, then how do we provide those services as, as a city over time? And so we've really actually tried to bolster those policies in this updated master plan. And again, through the growth and reinvestment framework, note that we need to use level of service more kind of strategically as a city over time so that we can get a sense of where we are and how we're doing when we have those services that really are more dependent on staffing. And I think of note is when we think, you know, especially around our public safety services, police and fire, we also have some other strategies in place, you know, requiring fiscal impact analyses with large master plan amendments, PUDs, and amendments to those PUDs should help provide that kind of fiscal information about what will the land use produce? What would be the cost and revenues that the city can expect to receive and expend? Those are all components that we're trying to build into this plan so that decision makers such as yourself have that information more readily available when you are evaluating these proposals and creating development that is going to necessitate the city fund those services on an ongoing basis over time.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Johnson, I've got a, I, I guess, I, I appreciate the discussion on this item, but Sienna brings up a couple of, of great points on this. This is, it's a master plan document for the city. And we, as the planning commissioner, are responsible for a portion of what the city does. And we're looking very specifically and delving down very hard on a couple of the things that come before us quite a bit. But on the broader picture, we have police, we have fire, we have engineering looking at these issues on their end. And they're also looking at this master plan and looking at things that are telling them that, hey, we've got, you know, this much area, you know, our, our plan, our land use plan is here. We have undeveloped land, we have PUDs that haven't been fulfilled yet. All of those could come online without even having to come before us, because they've already been approved. So those entities are looking at these very, you know, these very specific concurrency issues with respect to the targets that are already in place. So I, I guess, I, I share some of the struggle in terms of some of the things that we have to approve. But using the, the example of the large one out in the North Valleys and the questions that we were asking, those were fiscal questions that we don't have an answer to. And I think there's a lot of parts in this master plan that are dictating to the various agencies and to the council to review those fiscal impacts and to be making determinations and changes to allow for some of these concurrency things to occur. So while I don't have an answer to the concern that you have, Commissioner Marshall, I certainly think that there's a lot of parts and pieces in here that are, are, are asking those questions and forcing the city to, to make those concurrency, you know, move to achieve those concurrency things because of issues that already exist, not just for things that we're seeing as development. So I, I appreciate the work that staff has put into this. I understand where they're going with that. And I think some of the things, the policies that you've mentioned that specifically deal with these items are helpful, at least in my mind, of understanding what the master plan is trying to do. How that then aligns with findings that we have to make is, you know, with respect to concurrency is something that maybe needs a little bit of further analysis in terms of, you know, we can make a finding that the developer has agreed to pay for the sewer line or, you know, the city has agreed to increase the, the capacity of the sewer plant. Those are one-time outlays of cash. To staff a fire station in perpetuity is an ongoing fiscal issue that, that's what we struggle with at our level to try to answer. And, and I don't think, I, I think the master plan is giving opportunity for that to be answered, but perhaps with the, the input and the, the agreement from other entities around here, if that. So I appreciate where you're going with that, and that's kind of how I'm, I'm seeing this going. But again, if it, if it changes the language in here in terms of what to move forward, I don't know if it, it does that, but I certainly can appreciate this on a broader scale from what we're trying to deal with. Was that rambling enough to wrap that up?
Well said, as usual, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Levis?
Commissioner Levis, um, kind of touched on a lot of things here, I think, and, and they're all pretty difficult. I think one thing that, that I'd like to put out there, too, for everybody to remember is that, that there are, for the ongoing services, there will be, in a residential development example, there's going, the homeowners is going, are going to be paying taxes, too, as time goes on. So there'll be the ones that'll be funding the operations and the actual service versus the capital outlay upfront. I think a good example of that was in the North Valleys. If the developer puts in the fire station, then the homeowners are going to be paying property taxes and other taxes, too. And, and that's what's going to fund the actual service level. So I wouldn't expect the developer to, to pay for the service in perpetuity. Now, that said, there's other elements of a lot of the different types of service that I think make it difficult. And I think that some services are much more fluidly scalable and other services are going to be much more lumpy. And I think the, the sewer plant's a good example of something that's going to be very lumpy, scalable. I think that adding a new lane on the freeway to the north is a very lumpy, scalable thing. Hiring a new teacher is something that could be scaled up a lot easier. Or a new firefighter, that, that's, fits in more with the homeowner. So I just find it difficult to, to really nail down specific language. But I think that as far as concurrency of service, we don't want to have a whole fleet of firefighters out there just sitting out in the North Valley in a fully built-out fire station before there's even a house built. So things are going to have to kind of be a little more lumpy in how they progress. But also, I, I think, just wanted to emphasize that homeowners are also going to be contributing to this, too.
Thank you. Commissioner Wieske, you want to add in?
So as far as level of service...
So as far as level of services go, then do we go with what RTC recommends as a level of service D or F for being a successful roadway? Or do we discuss something better than if we were in school, passing or failing?
So in terms of RTC and their adopted levels of service, I think one thing that's important to note is, you know, through the Regional Road Impact Fee Ordinance, which the city of Reno has adopted, we have in effect adopted those levels of service, they're identified in that program. And when we think about levels of service on roadways, while we start with an A and we go down to F, we're also looking to find efficiency in terms of utilization of the roadways. Certainly, F has a greater amount of congestion, but to go all the way up to B or C means that, you know, the roadway for much of the time is not being tremendously utilized. So I think, you know, that's definitely something that the RTC board has grappled with over the years.
But that's today, that's not in the future. And I'll give you a prime example. Look at San Francisco, look at Sacramento, look at LA, look at Phoenix. When those roadways were built, they were underutilized. Now look where they are today. They can't get enough ground to open up the roadways to get any transportation through there, including emergency vehicles. So are we planning for today or are we planning for the future?
We would certainly be looking to, on the regional roadways, utilize those adopted level of service standards that are adopted by the RTC board. And I think, you know, whether or not those level of service standards are adequate is a decision that is made first at the RTC board level. And as I was mentioning, you know, kind of weighing utilization of the roadway versus the cost to expand it and provide levels of service that would be higher, and certainly there's a cost to providing those, is something that definitely the RTC board weighs over time. And I think if there's, you know, kind of further questions on kind of best practice approaches to level of service, I'm sure Janelle can weigh in. Our consultants have noted that a lot of cities, especially in urban areas, are actually starting to move away from level of service standards for roadways, acknowledging that congestion in those areas is something that's a bit more acceptable, noting that the desired mode of travel is more pedestrian-oriented, transit-oriented. But certainly as we look towards our larger roads, our major arteries, our freeways, those are going to continue to operate, you know, serving the automobile. So I think I'll just note there, and if you have questions, Janelle.
Sienna, you know, I just want to be, make it clear, not just for the record, but for you and I in this discussion, that my question and my comment is not based upon what's being presented and what you've been working on and what we've been agreeing with, but now we're down to the finite point, and I want to make sure that my recommendation, my vote, is for the future. And if we see other areas in master plans with their master plans that didn't really think something through because we're coming up to a deadline, is that the right thing to do? And I almost, and that's my, my question is, is that to you is, and my discussion tonight with other commissioners is, are we, have we prepared this to the best of our ability? And I say "our" because we're all putting our name on it, for the future. And I know you've worked tremendous hours on this with lots of different consultants. That's, I want you to give me a little more confidence.
Specifically as it relates to transportation or?
Just level of service. I mean, that's where we started, and listening to a couple of other commissioners' questions and discussion, I think it's a little more confidence that we need, that we're thinking not five years out, but ten, fifteen, twenty.
Yeah. So in terms of level of service, I think, as I mentioned in the presentation, you know, one of the key goals that we had was to be much clearer about it. Our existing master plan does not identify the level of service for all services the city is looking to achieve. And so in developing the level of service targets, that's something that we worked closely with all of our city departments on. Certainly, you know, as it relates to transportation, roadway infrastructure for regional roads would continue to be, unless RTC changes their policy, would be continued to be sized at a level of service D. That's also what NDOT has their adopted policy of level of, or policy level of service for. Again, on the local roadways, you know, lots of coordination among city staff in terms of, do we need to have, is it a smart choice to think about level of service standards for our local roadways and kind of the resounding consensus there was, we don't think that they're appropriate, just because those roadways don't experience the same types of congestion that our freeways and our regional roads do. Kind of going through some of the other services, you know, we certainly worked with police to actually identify what their existing level of services per 1,000, really work through, you know, what is their goal? How does police service change over time? You know, one of the things that police wanted to really have incorporated into the master plan in terms of looking forward to the future is the impact of technology and the fact that that can change level of service and how it's applied on a geographic basis, on a land use basis. And we do have police staff with us here tonight if they want to add in any more detail there. And really, the same was true for fire in terms of, you know, what has the fire department brought forward in terms of their regional standards of cover, really aligning the master plan with all of that work that's already been done? So carrying forward that work, being very clear about what our mitigation measures are outside of eight-minute response times. So really trying to look forward to the fact that the city, you know, is looking to have response times for fire that, you know, continually improve. That's a goal, very consistent with that regional standards of cover documents, not consistent, they're exactly the same. And so I think also with parks and recreation, we had lots of conversations with Parks and Recreation about their service standards, also lots of updates in terms of what are the minimum facilities needed to make parks function on a park-by-park basis. So that's something that is not always necessarily the case. So there was a lot of work in terms of how do we make parks more functional when they're provided? How might we have more flexibility in terms of different types of parks and different types of areas rather than just going with a kind of one-size-fits-all approach in terms of you have this many acres of this many type of park? So we really were trying to look towards the future with all of those levels of service and update them where we could, put them in the plan where they did not exist, and, you know, really make it clear that, you know, we want to evaluate level of service as projects come forward. We want to have better information to do that because service extension is a very, very important component of growth. So I hope that provides a bit more detail on each of them, that we really delved into kind of some very kind of deep work there. We didn't go into quite as much detail on those services that are a bit more infrastructure-heavy in terms of like water and wastewater, in terms of updating those levels of service. Really, you connect and then it's provided, so.
So I'd like to move on past level of service. Now, those were the first three items. Do the commissioners have any other comments, questions, feedback for the record for city council? Sienna, let's move on to, Commissioner Marshall has one.
No, 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 just, sorry, that's me. You said first three items?
Well, Commissioner Wysocki kind of brought us down to item three, so to kind of close out the level of service discussion there.
Oh, so just the first?
First three, the first three. We talked about roads, we talked about levels of service targets. We kind of skimmed over the second one, the third comparison of existing target levels. We talked about that, but feel free to.
That's fine, that's fine, sorry.
Okay. High confidence from the commission on those? Yes? Okay. Let's move on to closed basin flood management, that outstanding issue. Questions for Sienna staff?
Mr. Chairman, if you would have only given me thirty seconds more, I could have had one through four knocked down. I was ready.
I know you were.
Can I start then?
Please do.
Okay. Sienna, I don't believe we have any more closed basins to be dealing with in our sphere of influences or next annexations if they're closely related to the city limits. But again, for future planning, how do we, how do I look, and I didn't pick it out of here, and maybe I just was not reading it properly, how do we deal with looking at projects for storm water outside of the property lines that we're looking at in a project? How does city council look at the overall flow of water and know whether or not in a closed basin in particular, it can be handled? And who does the maintenance over the next fifty years to keep the depth of retention or detention at an operable level?
So it's a great point in terms of, we have a lot of policies that are very site-specific that can be used in the development and review process to say, how are you managing your storm water? And is it going to be retained on-site for the most part, not create any hazards to other properties? I think the larger question is how do we deal with this interacting with our regional partners? And so, you know, we have certainly policies, they're predominantly under Goal two-point-four that starts on page twenty-eight of your plan, to really, you know, continue working with our regional partners on growth capacity. Certainly, stormwater management is a part of that. We need to continue to work for water and wastewater operations and planning, participating in that regional water management plan process. That really is the regional document that is kind of our highest level there when we're looking not only at the potable water supply but wastewater and then also drainage. So we do need to continue working through those processes. And, you know, ultimately, and Janelle can probably jump in and provide a bit more detail here, there may be improvements that result from those regional planning processes that would be facilities maintained by multiple jurisdictions or functioned for multiple jurisdictions. It may not always be, you know, a site-by-site approach. You may have, you know, one facility that holds a lot of storm water, and that may start to impact, you know, the types of facilities that are needed on a site-by-site basis. So, you know, we will continue to work through those processes because it's, it is a regional issue, but it's also a site-specific issue, and the two have to be integrated together over time.
Okay. Because I started thinking about retention and detention and being two different sources, as I've learned recently. But, and that's, and we're really focusing on what happens downstream from a project that we are talking about on any given night. But there's upstream undeveloped properties who have full-flow sheet drainage that's not being retained or detained that overly impacts the first property that we put conditions on. You know, I mean, how, how in the master plan do we start to think about our open areas above our developments to control those waters, to slow them down or retain them, detain them?
Yeah.
And I know that's, that's probably not a high enough elevation look for a master plan, but it seems to me that it ought to be a part of it to know, so a developer coming into town or staff being presented with a project knows how to consider that also.
Yeah, absolutely. I know, I know Janelle's up and she'll be able to provide you with some additional detail there, but I think to kind of take it up to the master plan level and let her dive into more detail there, there's a lot of tools in the master plan to help us be a better partner in those regional planning efforts where you are using models a lot. So I think our land uses and being able to say, this is what we anticipate over time, this is how it affects, you know, the potential growth capacity in these areas so that when we do go through like the regional water management planning process or we engage in the development of a regional hydrologic model, you know, in participation with, say, the flood authority, we will be able to have a better sense of what those future impacts are and really, you know, kind of connect in with those infrastructure planning efforts in a way that hopefully is a bit easier. And then, you know, as those different processes produce different outcomes and projects, you know, all of that gets taken into account as we kind of go further, further down the line, and I'll let Janelle talk to that piece.
So Janelle Thomas, Senior Civil Engineer, again, for the record. So I think that, you know, Sienna set up the basis for this, and the way that we currently review plans is that we do contemplate what those existing flows are that are coming in. And so I don't believe that we're changing our strategies there as far as how that review at the development level will occur. We are still required to provide, or have the development provide that analysis of the existing conditions, and that's what the drainage manual that we are bound by and that we utilize as our standard for, of the practice for this region is kind of governed by that, by the use of those existing flows. So as time goes on and as we start digging into this further, the Public Works Department is in the process of trying to provide another analysis of specifically the Lemon Basin. And so I think that those tools will come back, and as a region, we're going to have to use that information that is obtained through those regional studies and then determine if there is a different methodology that should be used in these closed basins. They are quite different than, you know, flowing out to the Truckee, which just goes out to Pyramid Lake. So it is a different methodology that has to be used, but I think that we probably have some updates coming to the regional drainage manual and also to those methodologies that we use within that, within that standard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions, discussion, input, Commissioner John or?
Commissioner John.
Commissioner John, Commissioner Marshall. Got a Johnson and then a John. Got a Johnson and then a John.
Just a very quick question. So I interpret your response to that last question, looking at new inflammation strategy, inflammation six-point-two G. This is on page six of the of the remaining outstanding policy issues. Review and update stormwater management ordinances as needed to address. No, that's not what I was looking at.
So it would be this one?
I guess.
To respond to that study.
Never mind. I was reading it the wrong way. I apologize.
No worries.
Quick answer, no need for an answer then.
No worries.
Okay, easy. All right. Let's move on then to private water purveyors. Discussion, questions, feedback on that item. Commissioner Hawkins has one.
One thing on the, this is for Janelle. I'm concerned about the development in the North Valleys, specifically in the Lemon area. We have effluent that goes down into Swan Lake daily. I don't know the gallonage, two or three million gallons. As we increase the population with the newly-built homes in the area, we're going to continue to put the effluent down into Swan Lake and it's just going to exasperate the problem. Can we address that? You know, we have people come in and talk about it all the time. But it's a major concern because if we continue building, there's no other place for the effluent to go other than Swan Lake. And it's always been that way. It's just because of the year we had this year, it becomes a problem.
So Charlotte Honey, City Engineer, just shared with me that, that the Public Works Department is looking at different strategies in order to take care of that effluent discharge, such as infiltration basins or injection wells and things like that. Correct?
Do we slow progress down as far as building before that, before we can accommodate that?
Well, I think that we would have to show that we can efficiently and effectively manage the effluent that would be created by development. I think that's part of the whole development analysis. When we go through and, and look at those projects, we have to determine, A, is our capacity. And that capacity analysis includes the effluent discharge. That's a component of capacity that we would be looking at to make sure that we have that capacity available.
We always talk about the capacity of, we have, what, thirty-seven hundred more homes can come online before we're at capacity. But we fail to look at the effluent that's going into Swan Lake. And I reiterate the fact that we had a very wet winter. And as I speak, I still work on a couple of homes out in the flooded area from time to time. And I just want to, want to know for sure that we're taking care of the problem and not, you know, coming up with.
Well, and that's going to, that's going to be addressed on the operational side. And that will be determined during that, that analysis to determine if there's capacity. It's kind of a, it's a holistic look at the entire system. So you have to determine if there's pipe capacity for inflow. And then you also have to contemplate what the, what the discharges from your plants are going to be. The plant discharges are already contemplated for the maximum flow. And so I think that as we grow and as that plant needs to be expanded, then we need to revisit that, that discharge capability and what those strategies are. But it does sound like there is already a move to further analyze whether there might be some other methodologies to use.
Thanks.
Commissioner Hawkins backed up on me there to closed basin flood management, which is great. I'm glad we got that on the record because that's important. So we'll wrap those together. Closed basin flood management, water, private water purveyors. Let's loop them together. Commissioner Marshall.
Sienna, on new policy, two-point-four C, the third bullet, is there any reason why we shouldn't say require? Or actually should be requiring new development served by private water to design water systems in accordance with Tamwa rules? I mean, shouldn't that, shouldn't we be requiring that so that that cost is not passed on? And I don't know if Claudia or you want to take that one on? Not encouraged, but require that.
So in terms of the master plan language, I mean, the master plan is a policy document. So we, you know, for the most part tend to kind of stay away from the term require, noting that, you know, we do get to code and that's where we actually have standards that, that come into place. Certainly, the policy that suggested, you know, would support conditions up until a time at which the code would potentially be amended. So I think that's the general rationale for drafting the policy as is. And I think that's a condition that you've been finding on development projects as they've been coming forward already.
In my mind, then it seems in one of those rare instances like in the concurrency requirements, you know, saying that it's a hard stop as opposed to encouraging. But if this is the policy of the city, why don't we articulate it in the, in the master plan requiring? Then there's no debate as to whether or not this is what the standard that they have to meet. That's my pitch for changing that from encouraging to requiring. And then similarly, wouldn't we, wouldn't we want to add on inflammation two-point-four D that design new water development served by private water purveyors to support provision of sustainable source of potable water in accordance with Tamwa rules, regulations and standards? So mirroring the language up above. If we're going to, if they're going to be designing new development and ultimately Tamwa's going to be taking it over, shouldn't, shouldn't they be designing them, designing those to Tamwa standards?
I think certainly this, this implementation strategy is set up to look towards instances when kind of a backup supply of water would be desired. But certainly, this is also an implementation strategy that supports generally sustainable sources of potable water. It's not wholly limited to Tamwa. We do want to be able to use it to evaluate projects and also kind of set us up for potential amendments to the code. But I think generally it should probably be a bit broader and not completely restricted to Tamwa so that, you know, you do have flexibility. And, and then, you know, as you move forward through project review, you know, if it is in fact, you know, something that is a redundant supply that, that could be dealt with, you know, through project conditions that are consistent with this.
I would just, if this would help us to avoid added costs down the road, then I would support it. But if you don't think it's appropriate there, then I'm not, it's not something I need to push.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Commissioner Wieske?
Sienna, what happens if Tamwa Sells changes their name? Do we have to go through a revision to the master plan? Because we have specified something more specific than a professional water purveyor? Or the standards?
So, so if Tamwa were to change their name, it's my general sense that, you know, we have the authority under the minor master plan amendment to come through and do, do name changes. That's kind of what it's there for, statistical changes, name changes.
Because you're talking about a specific standard. And if, if a competitor of Tamwa's were to come in, they'd bring their standards with them and say, this is what we want to have. Does the city of Reno have to go through a master plan amendment to change that? Versus being more generic in the name, in the description of the provider?
Commissioner Wieske, I would respond to that and just say that I think that it would create confusion if we made it more generic. Because Tamwa is a pretty well-recognized name for good reason in terms of water purveyor. I would not necessarily support that just because of clarity purposes. And I understand where you're going with.
Oh yeah, I'm just asking the question so that we're thinking out ahead.
No, absolutely.
If I could jump in real quick, Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager. If there was going to be another competitor that came up that was of equal size or capacity of Tamwa, we're probably going to do a master plan amendment anyway. Because it's going to be a different, a different way of looking at things.
Okay. I mean, I just think of in Public Works, we have an orange book. Okay? And it's, it, that's pretty generic. It's not the city of Reno's that City of Sparks has, that Lyon County has, or anybody, Astoria County has. It's referred to as the orange book. It's kind of a little more generic. That's where I was coming from.
What happens if they change it to the purple book?
What?
What happens if they change it to the purple book?
There you go.
So are we good with wrapping up discussion, feedback, questions on the water topics? And ready to move on to growth management, infrastructure approach? I think we are. Okay. Questions, comments, feedback? Staff? Discussion items for this commission or feedback to council on growth management and infrastructure approach?
Can I?
Yep, oh, I'm sorry.
Describe, that's okay, describe. My, the concern that I talked with Sienna about was if you go to chapter two, is that where it is, Sienna, the prioritization of development?
So we have overall city prioritization under Goal two-point-one and infill and redevelopment prioritization under Goal two-point-two.
Sorry, I have way too many things.
And two-point-one is on page twenty-four.
So if, if you go to that and you look, and I think these are fabulous. This ordering of priority on page twenty-four and two-point-one A growth tiers. The problem, or not the problem, the issue that I see is how do we make these actually? How do we implement the prioritization? Do we say, okay, you know, and I think to some degree that's what Sienna addressed in, in the description of these other policies. I don't, I, I think I'm a bit, you know, I don't think it's something we should take on right now because it's probably a little more than just settling with an outstanding issue. Maybe we should see how the plan is implemented and see what things we can tinker with to actually promote this, this order of, of priority of growth and where we want, we want to direct first inwards and then to the outer fringe. And so, but we had a good discussion about how does that actually work within, you know, you start implementing this regional plan. So I think that, at least I just want to give you that was my background for raising, at least my portion of this, of raising this issue is how do we actually implement two-point-one A in terms of, you know, are we really pushing enough to get our first priority, which is infill development? To do a whole bunch of the good stuff we want to do. So I'll shut up on that one. Thanks for your indulgence.
Thank you. That's the feedback that we need. Other, other comments and feedback? Nope? Seeing none? Let's move on to annexation. Commissioner Marshall?
Getting tired of pushing the mic here. This is, this is my baby. And I think Sienna actually really described the issue well. When she talked about kind of the hand that we've been dealt. And how do we, and how did that hand come about? If you really look at, because, let me back up. This is not an immediate issue. If you look at our growth boundaries or you look at our, our city limits and you look at the SOI, the sphere of influence, they're almost co-terminous except for Winemucca Ranch and what was the other one, Marshall Ranch or Warm Springs? I can't remember whatever we call it. So, and those, you know, fingers crossed, can't be annexed because they're probably not contiguous. So the, the issue that this really gets to is what happens when the next development push comes around? And the next time that we get in a situation where there's extraordinary pressure to either extend our SOI or to extend or to annex outside of the SOI and bring in through voluntary annexations, the six-seventy annexations, bring that territory into the city limits? And six, the, the deal with six-seventy annexations is that they're ad hoc. They occur really at the timing and instigation of the property owner and the developer. Not necessarily in terms of when the city wants to consider the, you know, these annexations and when in their provision of services and take into account all these basic planning precepts. When do, when does the city want to grow in a particular direction? The vehicle for that, in my estimation, is the program of annexation. And what that does is it basically sets out and allows the city the flexibility to say, we want, we want to plan for the next seven years here and for the next twenty years in our SOI. And that that allows then the city to forecast to developers where growth, the city, not the developers, but the city determines where growth should occur, given all, all the considerations that go into that. You know, how much land area does the city need? What kind of lands? Do we have the inadequate, you know, budget to serve this particular area? Now, I know that there is a tension because to date the city has not included these voluntary annexations within their six-seven, excuse me, within their program of annexation. They're actually in there, they say, and any six-seventy annexations. They don't specify, is that, I think that I have that right. They're not specified, but they're, but they're identified in the plan. I don't think, and I realize that this is not an insignificant issue, that there's, that it carries with it some significant baggage and concerns across the spectrum. I don't think it should stand in the way of us recommending adoption or pushing on the, 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 excuse me, the master plan as it's currently formatted and exists. What I want to make sure though, and I think I've read through and I'd like to ask Claudia and Sienna about this, is I don't see anything in the existing master plan that would preclude the next time we do the program of annexation from including specifically identified and limiting it to specifically identified six-seventy annexations. Would you, so is that something we have to worry about at this point? Or I don't, when you, when, and Commissioner Gower did a quick search of every time annexation appears in the plan, it didn't seem like to me that there was any policy that precluded that from happening so that we can continue to work this issue and figure out what's the best way to plan future growth of jurisdictional boundaries? And that's what I'm really concerned about, not having it, this kind of what happened to us and what left us with this, you know, mix of existing PUDs, et cetera, out in the future. So that's, that's what I, I'm really, you know, Commissioner Wieske, looking twenty years ahead to say, the next push, how much control do we want to have on our, the growth of our jurisdictional boundaries? And in what way? And to me, that's really the program of annexation. And, but I don't want to hijack this process to, to really focus in on that. So I just want to make certain that we're not doing anything here that would preclude us from taking that on in the future.
No, absolutely not. And I think, you know, looking forward to potential future iterations of the annexation program. You know, if there is a desire to specify in that plan the locations where six-seventy annexations are desired to be considered, that, that's certainly a policy choice that could be incorporated into that planning document as well.
I would like to recommend that we, would you mind pulling up your slide on this issue?
Yeah, no problem. Oops, wrong way. So first slide or second?
So the, the, you know, the, there's two, there's two tasks here that staff has outlined. First, the determination if we want to do something more. And second, what should it be? First, the determination if we want to do something more, and second, what should it be? I would like to propose that, you know, if, if there is a consensus among the commissioners to look at something on this topic, to go with the SOI, not necessarily the seven-year program of annexation. The Sphere of Influence is adopted by, as you know, the, the, um, the Regional Planning Agency to identify 20-year pattern of growth. I think that's a good first step, but I'm open for discussion, and will likely go with the will of the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wiskey?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask for a little more explanation in that last comment you made, Commissioner Marshall, as far as looking at the timeframe? Can you explain that a little more?
Yeah, so, as defined in the Regional Planning Statutes, a sphere of influence that is, is the area in which the city intends or plans for growth in the next 20 years. The program of annexation is a subset of that, that looks at what's going to happen in the next seven years. And so the city, I think, first adopted one, I can't remember, I used to know this, but in the late 1990s, early 2000s, and then adopted another one about every seven years, or maybe a little longer, because it's, takes, it's not high priority. And so that, that identifies in those, Sparks does the same thing, because they operate under the same statute. They include 670 annexations or voluntary annexations. They identify those within their sphere of, excuse me, within their program of annexation. It is, I think this is a kind of a legacy from the kind of go-go years, but, so my, my, my issue was, let's maybe take the step of identifying, having those 670 annexations be within the 20-year horizon, if that's the rule of the commission.
So you want, what you're, what you're saying, Commissioner Marshall, is to, to not do a seven-year versus a 20-year, or a 20-year versus a seven, keep them both at 20 years, because it gives you a better outlook, and a better ability to plan for the future?
No, I don't think, the, the city doesn't have the discretion to do that under the planning statutes. They have to adopt a seven-year program of annexation. So it's more of, you know, at this point, you know, I'm sensitive to the fact that this is probably one of those third rail issues, or maybe not a third rail issue, it would be useful to hear from Claudia and, and Sienna if that's, if that's the case, or how sensitive this issue is. But it is an issue that I know has some strong feelings associated with it. I think because it's not a, a drop-dead issue to resolve right now, that, you know, we can kind of figure out the best way to handle it. And my suggestion would be, if it's kind of the consensus of the group, to have, bring them within the 20-year planning horizon as a first step, that maybe we should do that. But I'm open to the discussion of the commission.
Mr. Hawkins?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Sienna, has there been any talk with the council that's going to allow the Planning Commission to start making decisions on annexation?
Uh, we, we have heard that, you know, as we look forward to updates to our procedures, there's a desire for the Planning Commission to provide a recommendation to council, so it could come forward.
Mr. Marshall, I'll respond to you. I think it's a, it's, it's a challenging question that we have to answer and recommend to city council. So I think that we're mulling it through, and I'm trying to think of a question, or maybe I can encourage you to think of a question to ask staff related to your recommendation, so we can, as a commission, weigh the pros and cons of what you're proposing.
Sienna, could you comment on, you know, the relative pros and cons of moving forward with a suggestion that all annexations some, have some policy direction within the master plan, that all annexations should occur within the Sphere of Influence?
Yeah, so if the Planning Commission were to move forward with that policy approach, we'd kind of amend Policy 2.1D to add, you know, inclusion in the city's Sphere of Influence as one of kind of the guiding policy criteria that are considered when annexations come forward. There's a lot in that annexation policy, so it would be one of those. In terms of pros and cons, kind of take the cons first. So certainly, you know, we do have a fiscal advantage to kind of being flexible with our annexation decisions. And at the point at which we annex, we must provide service, but then we also get municipal tax revenue associated with that land. And so there may be some instances where it makes sense for the city to say, we would like this piece of land that's contiguous to the city of Reno. We think it's a good choice for a variety of reasons, fiscal probably being one of those, but it's outside of the city's portion of the Truckee Meadow Service Area as defined by the regional plan, and, and as I mentioned, those kind of two boundaries of the TMSA and SOI, the SOI nests within. So you kind of use the terms, or you hear the terms used together. So we would, if that were the case, and we didn't have the ability just to, to kind of annex through the adopted process that at this time just goes forward to city council if you're contiguous, what that would mean would be going to the regional planning bodies first. So Regional Planning Commission, Regional Planning Governing Board, that's obviously a regional board, multiple entities would be involved in that decision. And so certainly, there's an element of that decision not being wholly within the hands of, of the Reno City Council. It would be within a regional body first. And so there's kind of, you know, a little bit less discretion there. That's kind of one potential con as well. And thinking out a little bit further into what might be some benefits, I think as, as listed on the slide, we know that ultimately, if we want to intensify land use, if we do take a piece of land that's outside of our Sphere of Influence, and we don't have kind of our capacity per the regional plan to take in that acreage, we, we do risk a master plan amendment denial in the future. That's never happened. And I don't think it, it would be something that we'd bring forward, knowing that we didn't have the capacity, but, but there is that potential. And I think, you know, in terms of reducing jurisdictional conflict, that is a, a potential benefit. You know, I think for the most part, when we have voluntary annexations, you know, a lot of them are quite small, but then some of them can be, can be large. So I think for those of you that sit, you know, on the Regional Planning Commission, you'll remember the kind of 700 or so acres in Lemon Valley. Those came through on a voluntary annexation that was approved, and then you saw the regional plan amendment following that. And it, you know, definitely feels like, well, maybe, you know, there would be a benefit in some instances to having that conversation upfront, but that would come, you know, at the expense of, of flexibility and, for the council, and potentially would add a, well, it, it really adds that process at a different time in the development and review process, because ultimately, you need to do it if you're going to intensify land.
I certainly appreciate that response, and it helps me. I don't know that I have a response for you, Commissioner Marshall, at this point. I think when we get to the point of making a motion, whoever makes that, if we can include that element within the motion, that would be helpful. At this point, if there's no other comments or discussion on annexation, let's move on to Reno-Stead Airport Development Potential. Questions, comments, feedback for council on this one? Mr. Wiskey?
Probably not, can, it probably cannot be put in the master plan, but how do we get the properties being considered for industrial development put back on the tax books?
Claudia's going to answer that one.
Thanks, Claudia.
I'm kidding.
You're correct, it's not for the master plan.
Yeah, thank you, good answer.
Okay. Was that the last one?
One more.
I skimmed over it, downtown, I'm sorry. Downtown, feedback, questions? None? Okay. Well, here's where we're at. We've walked through, if you could put that final slide back up there, Sienna, just so we can recap. So we've walked through general questions and concerns related to the master plan. Mr. Marshall brought up one general point that we'll circle back to on page 10. We've walked through each one of the nine outstanding policy issues. We've provided our thoughts, feedback, gotten our questions answered for the most part on those nine items. So at this point, we are tasked with providing any additional direction or plan modifications to city council, and those can be included in a motion. In fact, I'd like them to be included in a motion. So at this point, that's really what I'm asking for. Let's take a five-minute recess, so we can think about that motion. We've got to formulate those questions in our minds. We can do that maybe over one of Janelle's cookies. Five-minute recess.
Do we have specific forms of motion that we, that we need to?
Page seven of the main staff report.
And we also have that excerpted on, on the slide that I just kind of moved to. We can, if you like, go back and forth between the two.
Okay, I think I'll use page seven, and take them in order, sorry, it's all those in there. I'll make a motion to adopt the new City of Reno master plan with direction on outstanding policy issues as articulated in staff's October 18th, 2017 memorandum with one change, and that would be to recommend inclusion in the criteria for considerations for annexation be within the Sphere of Influence. That's the 20-year Sphere of Influence. That's the twenty-year sphere of influence. In addition, like, the motion would include to add two section, sorry. It's actually text on page 10, to include within the identified bullets for major amendments. Language change conditions require such amendments. And that would be to reflect the language in NRS 278, 210-4. That would be my motion.
Excellent. We have discussion on the motion. Commissioner Wiskey.
I'm in agreement with the motion and would make a second on it.
Thank you. You looked like you were going to say something other than...
I do. I want to say thank you to staff. This has been a very educational and enlightening process, taking me much deeper into planning than I thought I would get the opportunity. But because of staff and fellow planning commissioners, legal, and when I say staff, not just staff, but from all the different staff members I've had an opportunity to talk to about this, you guys have all taught me a lot about master plan and how to put it together. And sometimes I get too focused on the finite things and forget this is a little bit broader. So thank you for your patience.
Well said. I would just echo that. Thank you. Commissioner, or, no, you're not a commissioner, a legal counsel.
Yeah, you're lucky. Did I hear in the motion that we were adopting the master plan and resolution 7-17?
Yes, I would include that in my motion. Thank you.
Does the second...
And the second includes that also. I knew it was right there.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, I just really wanted to express my appreciation for my successor, Chuck Reno, who spent a whole lot of time on this, and then I get to come in on the tail end. So I'd like to express my gratitude for his service. Thank you.
Agreed. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion now? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Sienna.
Thank you.
Do we need to make a motion to repeal the existing master plan and recommend the same to the, what?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're covered everything that you're looking for as staff. We've done.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
If we could, if I could just jump in on it quick, Sienna has done a fantastic job, but if Kelly Wilson could stand up, please, over there. Who, this would not have gotten concluded without her assistance on this. So I know Sienna is very thankful for her and all her work, so I just want to thank her as well on the record.
Yeah, round of applause. So with that, we will move on in our agenda to item number eight, which is Truckee Meadows' Regional Planning Liaison Report. And I can say that we had a meeting last week, and we saw the Marshall rant proposed rollback, which was approved, and also the addition of lands to the TMSA, 80 acres north of Sun Valley to accommodate a new school site there, which was also approved. Am I missing anything? I don't think so. Okay, staff announcements, item nine.
Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager, Councilwoman Breckus, I think, covered just about everything from my announcement list, but Fire Creek Crossing, master plan amendment was continued to the 25th. The sphere of influence discussion for the boundary down south for Steamboat by Rhodes Road is continued to the 25th. High Desert Trust was appealed and approved with a slight change on the hours of operation, and they specified more on not just the hours of operation for the outdoor manufacturing, but any outdoor activities, and limited the hours on that. So they didn't want truck traffic to continue that wasn't associated with the outdoor manufacturing. So I thought that was a great clarification. I would say in general, they supported your discussion and your conditions, but they just wanted that clarification. CVS appeal, which was, which is focused on their sign, was continued to the 25th, that will be heard at 1:00 rather than 6:00. And then the, also on the 25th, we are going, we're going to be there really late, there's going to be a discussion on homeless services amendment to Title 18, as well as ADUs, accessory dwelling units. So we have initiation on that on the 25th. So it will be a lively meeting and a lengthy one, but you'll be getting some homework out of it. So, thank you.
Claudia, when does Stonegate go to council?
Stonegate's going November 15th.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Claudia, Commissioner Wiskey, real quick, did I hear Councilwoman Breckus say that Verdi was going to be appealed?
Uh, yes.
It hasn't been appealed yet, though.
I believe it was appealed. It was appealed, yes.
Oh, it was appealed?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It's going on the 8th, I believe. Yes, November 8th.
Commissioner, suggestions for future agenda items, number 10? Nope? Okay. Public comment? Item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment.
Okay, I'm going to say something, Commissioner Galvin.
Okay.
Just to embarrass Claudia.
We need Development Director Jensen.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I think Claudia also needs to be applauded for, these were some very long hours that everybody put in, and it was very hard to manage the time, especially given our staffing. And so I'd like to at least give Claudia a round of applause for her work, for doing that. Thank you, Claudia. And yes, Sienna and Kelly are awesome. I'll add that, too.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, I'm going to close public comment and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor? All right, thanks, everyone.